Pastor Colton Sharp. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and our prayer. Thank you.
Let's bow. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to thank you this day for that you made rejoice and we're glad in it. And Father, you instructed us to pray for those in authority, so we come today, Father, so that we can live a quiet and peaceable life. Thank you, Father, for our mayor, our city council, for their service to our city. Father, thank you for them choosing to serve. And Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as they make decisions that affect each and every one of our lives. Father, I pray that each and every council member will value and respect each other's perspective and will be civil in their response to each other. Father, I pray right now, in the name of Jesus, God, that they will be examples of civil discourse for those who are in this room, those who are watching online, and most importantly, Father, for our children. Father, in the name of Jesus, I thank you right now, and I ask that you would order their steps today. You said, Father, that if we would trust you with all of our heart and lean not into our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge you, that you will direct our path. And so, Father, I pray right now that you would direct their path today, Father, as they lead this city. Now, Father, I come and I pray for the staff of our city, God, as they carry out every decision that this council makes. Father, let them know that they are appreciated in making our city a better place to live. And finally, Father, we pray that you would bless our city, that our city would be known as a city of unity that's demonstrated by this council, and as we bless your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join us in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will you please silence your cell phones? And may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Gitz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no proclamations and no presentations or recognitions today, but I will say for a public comment, now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front right of the room. At the beginning of your time, the green light will come on, and at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on.
Alexis Miller, 2328 Poplar Street, Beaumont, Texas. Item on the consent agenda regarding the scooters.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to represent the younger. Hello, everyone. I'm here to represent the younger generation of the city of Beaumont, Texas. Due to today being the last day of finals at Lamar University, a lot of students that I asked to come with me and represent weren't able to make it. But I did get their feedback, and I have it here in my notes. My personal opinion on the electric scooters, it would be a fabulous idea, and it would bring a lot of revenue to the city of Beaumont. Due to when we evacuated in 2020, I saw a lot of people when I went to San Antonio on the scooters every day. People were just going to the mall, doing other things with their families that really helped the city of San Antonio bring in revenue, and I would want that for the city of Beaumont. A classmate of mine, Quentin Haynes, thought it would be a new source of income, as most cities use scooters and bikes as a way to collect revenue from the people who rent the scooters and the bikes. As we know, we already have the motorcycles outside, and that has been bringing revenue to the city of Beaumont, and I think the scooters would just enhance it and bring out the city of Beaumont. Another classmate of mine, in the opinion, the scooters will engage the younger generation and help to keep the younger generation focused and engaged on positive things such as school, family, and stay out of trouble. And another one of my classmates, who wasn't able to be here today, she felt like that the scooters would bring more people together, and that's what we want for the city of Beaumont is unity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ava Graves, 1090 Roberts Avenue, Beaumont, Texas. Item number six on the agenda.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. I want to say to you, Attorney Cooper, your expertise and hard work will not be forgotten. Godspeed as you move into your new season. Madam Mayor and City Council Members, wow! What an exciting time and season for our city. We have an opportunity to give a positive response to the questions about why young people should stay in Beaumont. We often hear about it and even see the youth exodus. Campaign promises often taught the need to keep our youth and even state the intention of doing something about it. We have a chance to seize the moment, a chance to show our youth that we will invest in them. They are our future, but we must invest in them now. Our first Assistant City Attorney, Mrs. Reed, is someone whom we have observed as a young professional who chose to stay home. She is loyal and committed, as proven by her 11 years of employment with the city. She has the academic and state credentials for the position. She has specific legal expertise for our city. She has integrity to do the right thing. She has courage to make the right decisions. She has widespread support in our community. She is ready now. Dr. King's vision of judging people by the content of their character rather than the color of their skin, and might I add, their agenda, is presented here before us. Mrs. Reed's appointment to City Attorney will make the right impact for us and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Jones, 1045 Dusset Avenue, items three and four on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As stated, my name is Christopher Jones. As catalyst of the Accountability Affiliates, I am before you to address item number three and four on today's agenda. According to item number three, Pro Pipe Incorporated of California is seeking a contract to do something that, if my memory serves me correctly, the city already did with, did that with another company in the past. Not to mention, this move is another move that would take the tax dollars out of Beaumont citizens, tax dollars out of Beaumont citizens outside of Texas, as well as outside of this community. Understanding that there is a great need to rehabilitate defective sewer maintenance utility access holes and sewer main lines throughout the entire city, but to throw money at an evaluation, once again, on an issue we should know the state of and how to manage internally with local contracting for aid. It is a bit redundant, if you ask us. Due to countless years of outsourcing work to companies not located in the city of Beaumont and/or our neighboring economies within the state of Texas and/or Louisiana, to manage this type of work, we, the citizens of Beaumont, have overspent and/or pressed for resolve and not by another assessment or evaluation. We would ask the council to table item number three to search for local and/or statewide expertise and reliable solutions to an age-old problem. As for item number four, which is to reallocate funds from the sewer line repair program, where the item previously mentioned obviously is going to need funds to, once again, hopefully, identify cost-effective methods to bring about resolve to the sewer utility access hole and main line issue. An item management is advising to go into contract with a company that is outside of Texas, then to turn right around and ask for your consideration and reallocation of funds in the sewer line repair program, assumingly, the same funds that will aid to rehabilitate said sewer utility access holes and main line issues. No offense, this item should be tabled by the council from the agenda. We suggest reallocating public housing funds and/or partner with the public and private sector for contributions and donations searching for other CBDG fundings toward the Salvation Army Homeless Shelter Rehabilitation Project. Respectfully yours, the Accountability Affiliates, Christopher Jones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would ask that a factual statement be made to address the difference between the sewer rehab fundings in number four versus what the agenda item is in number three. Can you address that, Mr. Manager, Mr. Escobido?
I mean, there's a lot of false statements that were made.
Well, item three, we actually had the funding source off on it. It was normally our sewer main rehab CIP line item. Because of the fact we got the American Rescue Plan funds, that's what we're going to do, the sewer main rehab items for this year end. So that's the funding source that it comes out of. And I can either talk to it now or later, but, you know, this is a work order contract to do inspection and evaluation as necessary during the year. I think this is the fourth such contract. We do this on an ongoing basis within the system.
But what I was specifically getting at was the difference between that program and what the program is, number four, where we had previously had a program where citizens could apply to get some funding.
That would be Mr. Boone.
Could you please?
Right. The distinction there is the sewer line replacement program was a CDBG, still is a CDBG program, and the idea behind it is if a homeowner has an issue with their sewer line, but they may not be able to have the funds to repair it, that they could apply to this program to get CDBG funding to make that repair. So the two are not connected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zalima Escobedo, Port Arthur, Texas, and I did not get an address from her. Can you state your address, Ms. Escobedo, for the record?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Zalima Escobedo from 3308 Medical Triangle in Port Arthur, Texas. I'm actually the local, I guess you could say now, new founder of this area of LULAC, which we have over 200 members. Some of you are members of that, thank you very much. I'm also the president of the Mexican Heritage Society. LULAC has over 90 years in the United States. The Port Arthur Fiesta, which is also a nonprofit, we're over 50 years old, and we would love to work with you on one of the items that you have on bringing new events to Beaumont. When we hold our fiestas in September, we actually have thousands of people for about 100-mile radius that come and participate. And we have Beaumont that always, because a lot of people from Beaumont participate in that for queens or the dancers, which is, a lot of our culture is there in the Hispanic community. And they always tell us that, why don't we do it here in Beaumont? Well, we were founded in Port Arthur. It's been there for over 50 years. So we were thinking about maybe doing a Cinco de Mayo in Beaumont, because we do feel bad that we're only having it in Port Arthur for this community. So we would love to work with you. Both of those organizations, LULAC and the Mexican Heritage Society, would love to be added to the new events that you might be bringing to Beaumont. And it's not just for the Hispanic community. It just brings awareness and, you know, culture about, you know, what all of our cultures are about. And so when we had one, which was very similar to that back, I don't know if you remember Taco Fest pre-COVID, it was open to all the community. We had thousands of people here on Crockett Street. So we would love for you to, you know, consider us, and we're here for anything that we can be in assistance of bringing that culture here to Beaumont.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mindy Escobedo, I think, 3853 Phelan Boulevard, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, good afternoon, Council and Mayor. Thank you all so much for letting me speak in front of you today. I am a current student at Lamar University. I'm president of my sorority, Zeta Tau Alpha. I'm just going to give you a little bit of a background so you know my credibility. I'm also Lamar Ambassador, and I'm president of the new LULAC chapter at Lamar University. As you can see, I am Hispanic, and I see that Councilman Gitz and Councilman Turner are proposing new events and new ideas that we could potentially bring to Beaumont, Texas. Now, I do work with edible arrangements here in Beaumont, which is why I'm speaking on behalf of them. We are local business owners that are Hispanic, and we would love to bring more Hispanic culture to Beaumont. I've seen many different cultural events here, and I too was a part of Taco Fest. I actually got to help choose the judges that were able to try the tacos and give them the best ratings. But I think we would do a lot better if we were able to include the Hispanic community in the events that y'all hold year-round. I know y'all have great events that y'all already hold. The Christmas lighting is one of my favorites. But I would love to partner with y'all. I also was a junior Miss Mexican Heritage Queen, which Zalima was talking about. So I'm very proud of my heritage, and I love people to get to know more about us and what we do, because it's not just all tacos and speaking Spanish. Thank you all so much for giving me a chance again, and I hope that y'all take this into consideration. Have a great day.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please signify by saying aye for approval.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Mayor, Council, item number one is to consider amending Resolution Number 21-110 for the purchase of eight paratransit buses. Back in April of this year, City Council authorized the purchase of eight compressed natural gas-fueled buses from Creative Bus Sales from Irving, and the total purchase was to be $948,248, with an estimated six months for delivery. And due to manufacturer delays, it's unlikely the city will receive these buses until possibly 2023. The current fleet of our paratransit buses are in poor condition and are in need of replacement. The same manufacturer has a current option for eight gasoline-fueled buses at $108,380 per bus, for a total of $867,040. So there would be a savings if the council approved this. Estimated time for delivery for these gasoline-powered buses is 90 days from the receipt of the purchase order. So funds are available from a Department of Transportation, Federal Transportation Administration grant, and then there's a local match in our municipal transit fund of almost $49,000. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
I know we talked about this recently, the bigger buses. Would they be available still in the same amount of timeframe? So are we kind of looking at the bigger buses and these smaller ones arriving at the same time or close to it?
No, sir. The bigger buses, my understanding, we do have Albert Eby with the transit company here, but I understand that they are going into production here soon. But because of the production time, they won't be delivered at the same time. They will be, but we do expect them in 2022.
So 2022, but we don't have a projected, like, January, February?
Summer, I think was the latest estimate.
Summer 2022?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. And do you know how many will be delivered 2022, approximately?
Eight.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Durio.
On the, I guess this is the receipt. It has an unpublished option, $33,985. You know what those are?
Probably things like the bicycle racks, other amenities we've added.
Right. There are certain things we have to customize in terms of bicycle racks, seating, fare boxes. And so above the base model, there are certain options that we have included.
Probably won't be bike racks on these.
Right.
We do have options that we add on our big buses.
That was my question. We're not going to put bike racks on the paratransit.
Correct. But on the larger one, we will.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. And for the sake of our citizens, these are handicap wheelchair accessible. They don't see what we see, but they are.
Yeah, these are providing mostly rides for our citizens, for dialysis, doctors' visits, hospitals that aren't in a position to ride our fixed routes.
Okay. Councilmember Turner.
The $81,208, the additional funds that's going to be saved?
Yes.
Do transit or anybody have an idea, kind of, what's some other options or what may take place with their savings?
So the savings would be the reduction to the grant, and most of the grant is paid with FTA funds. So we may be able to reallocate those to other projects. We're looking at a variety of improvements to Danenbaum Station. We've got fencing issues, lighting issues, security cameras. So we would look at trying to reallocate some of those funds.
Any other discussion? No other discussion. All in favor of approving item number one? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Item number two is to consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Legacy Community Development Corporation to receive what are known as Home Investments Partnership Funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city of Beaumont receives an annual allocation of home funds from HUD. Legacy proposes to utilize $360,282. Those are known as entitlement funds. They'd also like to use $77,203 of CHODO reserve funds for acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale of three homes to be sold to eligible low-to-modern-income families. In addition, Legacy is requesting $25,734 for operating funds. All income received by Legacy for any properties must be used toward furthering the organization's affordable housing activities. This is something that we've done for many, many years, utilizing federal funds. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Some more for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do, Mayor.
Councilmember Durio.
Do they know where in the city these three houses will be built? Have they decided on that yet?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Councilmember Gitz.
Well, that's kind of my question, too, because the way this agenda item reads, it says for the acquisition and rehabilitation, which tells me that there's some houses out there that are going to, that's already out there that they're going to buy, acquire, and then rehabilitate. And they've got a budget number down here, so how can we not know where these houses are? What potential pool of houses are we looking at?
So, and Vivian Ballou with Legacy is here, but what they do is they're constantly looking at the market. So I know, for example, I know they have one in mind, but they haven't committed. There's no contract on Fifth Street. But they're constantly looking at possible homes. And again, they're looking for homes that are in such a shape where it wouldn't take an extreme amount of money to rehabilitate them, because at the end of the day, you know, what they're trying to do is offer safe, decent, affordable homes, you know, to families at an affordable price. So at the end of the day, it's providing a good house to a family of low mod income.
Which is a laudable goal that I support. I'm just kind of concerned that we don't have enough information right now, because, you know, I'd like, for instance, to know how much of the money is being used to acquire the home versus how much of the money is being used to rehabilitate the home. You know, that's kind of an important part of the equation, too.
Correct. So we could, you know, we could get prior years. In other words, we've done this many, many years partnering with Legacy as a CHODO. So, you know, we could provide, okay, what did they do last program year or the last several program years, and take a look at those houses, how much money was put into it.
Well, Mayor, what I'd like to do, could we get Ms. Ballou to come forward from Legacy and explain the program and what they've done over the years?
Good afternoon. Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. What we've done previously is, it's really hard to know what property will be available until we sign the contract. Because of the movement of real estate here in Beaumont, it's really hard to know which property will be available. But there is a review process that each property has to go through. So it's impossible to contract too early, because it takes about 30 days to have the city staff review, do an environmental review on each property. Then we do a scope of work, which would give us a budget for the rehabilitation. So it's really hard to provide you with a list of properties this early.
Okay, so I guess what you're saying, it's a fluid process.
Correct. What we do is we go out and we look, a lot of times we look at foreclosures or properties that have been abandoned. We do the assessment on those properties. The city staff looks at those properties. We come up with a rehab budget and to see, make sure it's also affordable for the buyers, because most of our buyers are in the market about, 120 is the max for the sales price for this program. And most of our buyers are about $110,000, so we have to make sure that the house would be affordable.
Ms. Ballou, how many years do you think we've contracted with you?
12 years.
So we don't go write her a check for after you approve this today? Y'all approve this, probably contract her every year for 12 years? So the way it works is now she knows what she has to work with, and she'll go out and identify, hopefully, three homes. But it all comes back to us and is approved by our housing staff, community development staff, and then that's how it works. I don't want the public to think we're going to go write her a check for $500,000 today. That's not how it works.
It's a reimbursement program. So we actually purchased the properties prior to, but then we submit those to the city, and we're reimbursed for that purchase. So there's no money upfront at all.
And about how many homes have you all done?
Probably, over 12 years.
Yeah.
Maybe about 100 houses total? Because not all of the houses are legacy houses. So some of the buyers go through our program. We get them certified, and they can go out and buy a house on the market. So they're not, the funding here only allows for us to do about two houses, three houses a year. So some of the houses are actual purchases from the private market.
And you all are not just finding homes and getting them in. You do some education for the homeowners, first-time help, financing? What are some of the things you do?
Correct. We do credit repair. We work with the clients to get to a preapproval amount. To be able to receive this funding, each one of the buyers has to be certified. So they go through a home buyer education course. We work with them on their credit until we help them find a mortgage, and then we work with them on buying a house. So we basically buy for our buyers so that we have a budget in mind and a buyer in mind. We don't really do speculative buying. So when I know that I have a buyer ready, I go look for a house for that particular person.
Mayor, thank you, Ms. Ballou. You've answered my concerns and questions, and, you know, I appreciate your good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ballou, I have just one question. The $25,000 that you're asking for operating funds?
Yes.
Can you just explain a little bit what that covers?
Yes, we rent a suite over here in the foundation building. We have utilities. We have rental costs as far as internet. We have staff. We pay a counselor to work with the clients here in Beaumont, just the cost to operate the office for a year, which is, this is only a portion of what we pay, because our staff salary is not even covered with this amount.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, at this time, all in favor of approving item number two? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the item of reading? Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the item of reading, the reading of item number three, please?
Mayor, council, uh, item number three is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to ProPipe Incorporated of Irvine, California, to clean, televise, and evaluate the city's sewer collection system to identi, identify cost-effective methods to rehabilitate defective manholes and main lines. On December the second, uh, one bid was received for furnishing all labor materials and equipment for the project. Uh, the engineer's estimate was four hundred thousand. The contract with ProPipe would be in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The contract will be paid for with American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please? Have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Gads. Councilmember Neil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we did the same program last year, correct? Do you know what the number was for last year's contract?
Not offhand, do you?
I can get it to you, but I don't know it offhand. That, that's fine. I think we've done it for four, I think this is the fourth contract, so this is the fourth year. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Gads.
Okay, addressing the citizens' comments made prior to this agenda item coming up, um, I am a little surprised that only one vendor and none from Texas responded to this. Uh, why, can you elaborate as to why you think that might be the case?
In the past, um, the company that I believe's had all three years was out of Houston, um, and we've worked with them extensively. However, recently, the City of Houston signed a consent decree with the EPA, um, to address sewer overflows. And so under that decree, they're required to spend, I think, two billion dollars in the next, I forget the time period. It's fairly short, maybe four years, six years, something along those lines. So because of all of that money that's, that's going to be spent in the Houston area, that's refocused a lot of companies, including the one that, that we have been working with. They gave us a heads up and said they're focusing all their work with City of Houston under that decree going forward.
Are there not that many, uh, companies that do this type of work?
Uh, not this specific work. They're, they've gotta have the equipment to televise, uh, clean and then televise the lines, so there's fewer companies that, that do this exact type of work.
Is there anybody local that does it, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Councilmember Turner.
Do we kinda, do we put out an RFP, or that, if that how the process worked, and only one came back?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Durio.
Can you explain what you mean when you say, uh, televise the lines?
Uh, they'll, they'll evacuate the line, clean it out, and then they'll put a camera down the line, and they'll be able to record and, and see what the line looks like, so that we can assess for repairs.
Do they do that on specific lines, or do they do the whole city?
This is a work order basis, so we would have a trouble area, um, say like, uh, what recently came to council was Florida, where we had that collapse, and then they would, they would evacuate the line, clean it out, and then televise it so that we can see what repairs are necessary. So it's on a call, you know, work order type basis, as needed.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gads.
So does this company have a presence in southeast Texas? I mean, how is that gonna work if we call somebody out? Uh, I mean, I'm just concerned.
The headquarters is in California. I'm not entirely sure where their Texas, uh, is based out of, but yeah, they've gotta have someplace here.
But you're confident that there's someplace local that they have, that they can, uh?
Yes, sir.
Send out to a call?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. Item number four, please.
Item number four is to consider a resolution to reallocate funds from the sewer line repair program to the Salvation Army Homeless Shelter Rehabilitation Project within the 2019 CDBG program. Your budget, Chris Boone, our planning and community development director, will lead the item.
Thank you.
Yes, again, as was discussed earlier, um, we've had some interest in the sewer line program, but we've not received, um, any or many eligible applicants. And so, um, what we're proposing is to reallocate the 2019 sewer line, uh, funding, uh, to the propos, the program at hand, which is the Salvation Army's homeless shelter located on McFadden. And so Captain Moore with the Salvation Army is here with us. And so what we're proposing to do is reallocate a hundred thousand dollars, again, from the sewer line program, uh, to the Salvation Army, uh, uh, shelter there on McFadden. Some of you may have attended the ribbon cutting on November eighteenth. You may have noticed that they were not quite ready, uh, to open and operate. So Salvation Army has come back to us asking for additional funds so that they can complete the project. Um, so again, that's what we're recommending to do, is to reallocate these CDBG funds to help complete this project.
That is for those homes that were across the street?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yes.
Is it?
There, there are two, there used to be three. Now there are two homes there. And, uh, again, they're rehabbing it for a shelter. For those of y'all who participated in the mayor's homeless coalition, uh, you realize there's quite a need for a shelter, and this is the only one we have. So the, uh, the intention, again, is to try to support that.
Can we have a motion so that we can have a discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay.
I, I move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Gads.
Okay, so one of the things that I noticed is this sewer rehab program is coming from the 2019 budget. This was money that was available in a pot out there that just was never applied for. And if there's, uh, that, that program still exists in the 2020 budget, if you do have applicants from qualified homeowners for the sewer rehab, there is still going to be money. Even if you move this hundred thousand dollars from 2019, you're gonna have 2020 money available to address those needs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And as I, and as I understand it also, uh, and maybe Captain Moore, you can identif, answer this better, but I, I was at the project, uh, yesterday. It looks like y'all are extremely close to being open. What else is left to be done out there?
Where's Captain Moore? Can you come forward?
He may have had to leave.
He was here earlier.
Did he?
He was here. I don't see.
Oh, he stepped out.
Okay, he stepped out.
Can we see if he's gone, or if he just stepped out? Hey, Captain Moore, had a question for you. We are, we're considering this, uh, agenda item. Can you tell us what is left to be done out there and when you project to be open?
Yes, sir. We're, we're right at the end of the project. Uh, we have the first house completed. We're wa, waiting for the final inspection. Uh, the second house, they're putting the, the, uh, final touches. The, uh, electrician is, uh, completing his work. Uh, the guys have put down the flooring. Uh, the, the painting, uh, inside is, is completed. Uh, we had to replace, uh, the stairs and decking on one other side. And we, we put up, uh, motion sensor lights. All the security, uh, work has been done. Uh, the, the TV monitor, uh, with cameras inside the house, houses and all, on, on all around the houses, and all the mo, and once again, the motion sensor lights. So mu, much of the work is completed. Uh, I think we are looking at the end of this week, uh, for them to put those, uh, final touches on. And then there's gonna be another, uh, final inspection for the second house.
Okay. Would you please say again, for people that might not have heard previously, how much you're gonna charge, uh, the homeless that would like to have a place to come in and out of the cold? What, what will be the fee that the Salvation Army charges for that?
Yeah, zero dollars.
Zero dollars. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's gonna be a z, a, a zero dollar charge, but can you state, um, how are you gonna go about, um, allowing, uh, overnight stay? What's the procedure?
Yes, they, uh, when the, uh, person that needs a room, uh, comes into the shelter, they are asked for an ID. Uh, if they don't have an ID, then we will, uh, talk with Kate, the, uh, case manage, uh, manager. Uh, the case, uh, case, uh, manager will help them, uh, try to help them get an ID if they can. Also, once they, once they're in the shelter, uh, we will make sure that we start talking about a plan, and then they'll try to work their plan, uh, each day as they're, while they're in the shelter. Uh, they also have to make sure that they follow the rules that are at the shelter. And that's really the, the hardest part for any person that's coming to the shelter. It's, I'm no longer free to kinda do whatever I want, you know? Uh, usually if they live off the grid, uh, in an encampment, you know, they're free to kinda, you know, uh, come and go as they, as they please and, and kinda make their own rules. And so that's, that's really the most difficult part about staying in the shelter.
How many beds are available?
We, we, we're gonna have, make sure that there are, uh, at, at least twenty to thirty beds in each house, uh, because we have the high ceilings now, and so we can get more bunk beds, uh, within this space.
So this hundred thousand dollars would really, really be a great help to get this completed?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Because we, what we found, uh, when we talked to the foreman, uh, uh, that's in charge of the work, uh, one thing that he found out during the pandemic is that many, much of the pricing, uh, had increased exponentially.
Absolutely. Well, we're gonna go ahead and let you sit down, so we can go ahead and get this. We have one other question.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. If they, uh, uh, don't have an ID or unable to get one, is that reason, do you turn them away, or do you still accept them?
Oh, we still accept them. Uh, one of the reasons that the idea is important for the shelter is that, uh, we do sometimes get families into the shelter, and so if we have someone that, uh, uh, has something on their record, uh, such as, uh, you know, uh, sexual abuse or, uh, so we, we have to make sure that we let them know that, you know, you can't stay in.
A safety measure.
Yes, sir.
For the other.
Yes, sir.
When the, when the shelters are complete, will they be fully furnished also? Will this cover that?
Yes, sir. Well, not, the hundred thousand doesn't have to. Uh, our partnership with Habitat Humanity includes furnishing. Uh, they have a, they have a, a partner that they've connected with that said, uh, they're gonna send them brand new furniture, and it's free. And, uh, and they're sharing that furniture with the Salvation Army.
Great. Any other discussion? Councilmember.
Not from the captain. I, I have a question for Chris.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, for those who might not, uh, understand what the CDBG funds are, can you kinda give a brief capsule of that, that program?
Yes, sir. So CDBG is an acronym for, stands for Community Development Block Grants. And those are HUD funds, Department of Housing and Urban Development. So they're federal dollars that go to entitlement cities, which Beaumont is one. And if you get these funds, you can use them, uh, for what are called national objectives, and there are three. But essentially, it's elimination of slum and blight. It's to assist low to moderate income individuals, families, and also for urgent needs. So following hurricanes, when we have the houses that are repaired and reconstructed, those tend to be urgent need dollars. But our normal allocation that the city receives, approximately one point five million a year, uh, goes to CDBG, again, for the national objectives of elimination of slum and blight, and then to help low to moderate individuals. So, um, those funds are a, allocated annually. We use them for a variety of purposes, including demolition, minor repair. We partner with Habitat for Humanity, uh, to administer that program. Uh, we use the funds, of course, to, uh, partner with our nonprofit partners, public services. And so that process will start here in the beginning of the year. Those deadlines, the deadline's coming up in February, and we'll bring that to council, those applications in, uh, probably March, April. And so that's primarily what we use, uh, use with those CDBG funds.
So those funds are about one point five per ye, million per year. In the past, uh, uh, how much did the City of Beaumont receive normally?
Um, the manager could probably help me. Going back, you know, fifteen years ago, when I first started, it was substantially more. I would say more than, more towards two and three million.
And, uh, those were used, uh, for a variety of things. At one time, you could use them for infrastructure and, uh, streets at some point?
Good. As long as they match the national objectives, which pretty much stayed the same.
And that's what pretty much, uh, eliminated a lot of the open ditches in the south end of Beaumont?
They've been utilized for many purposes, but they all went to benefit low to moderate income persons. And that number's, was probably closer to three million, twenty, twenty-five years ago, and it's continued to decrease. And so we utilize those funds the best that we can.
So many, uh, much, many of the CHODOs would utilize those funds at one time to provide for housing and home building, first time, uh, homeowners.
They used to receive more, more home dollars as well.
Right. So we have two kinda, we have CDBG, and then we have the home. And it's, the home is more focused on affordable housing, which we heard from Legacy earlier, that, again, that's a nonprofit partner. And the idea is, is more housing-based to get families into affordable, decent housing. So it's a little bit different, but under the same, kinda the same program.
And, uh, there are certain guidelines that has to be followed?
Yes, sir.
Strict guidelines?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Also, uh, Mr. Boone, could you explain the sewer line repair program so that citizens listening will know, uh, what the procedure is and what those dollars are used for?
Right. So we, especially recently, as our infrastructure age, we, we've encountered individuals who have a sewer line, let's say, a collapse. Let's say they had old clay pipes, and it collapses, and you have, it's basically on the homeowner's side, so the city is not allowed to fix it, because it's on the homeowner's side. And so some individuals did not have the means to make that repair, so it was, um, it, it's a problem. So the idea, we, we, we came up with the idea, the manager did last year, and we, and it's a sewer line, uh, program, where we can use CDBG federal dollars. Um, and that's an important distinction, right? So typically, we cannot use city funds for private, uh, benefit, but CDBG is federal dollars, so it's a little bit different. So as long as it's for one of those national objectives, we can use it, uh, for private, private goods. So the idea is, if you, if, if you're a low, moderate income family, um, you're a homeowner, that's the current rule, you can apply for this program, where we may be able to help, um, pay for the repairs of the sewer line. We did market it, um, I think a good bit. It's on, the application's still on the, our webpage. I would encourage people to continue to apply, because even though we're reallocating some funds, or proposing to reallocate some funds today, you know, we do have money in the 2020 line items, so we are encouraging folks to, to apply. I will say that we're also may consider, uh, adjusting the rules, so that maybe, um, rental property might be eligible. Uh, we're just trying to work with HUD to see how we can make that happen, so we can try to get, try to get more folks, uh, to take, uh, take advantage of the program.
Trust me, if they have sewer problems, it's, it's not, uh, a cheap fix.
No.
It's a very, very costly fix. So to the public, we'd just like to let you know that funds are available for assistance, but of course, you have to meet the guidelines.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, and then Councilmember Felschek.
Well, to staff, I think it's a very proactive approach, the way you guys are looking at reallocating them funds to help people in need. But my second question is kinda the follow-up. I noticed you said it wasn't a lot of qualified applicants, that's why some of this money was left over. I wanted to know what we're doing to notify the community on how to apply to home management, too, kinda what you said with marketing. What are some things we are doing to make the community aware that this is available?
So when we started the program, of course, the media, uh, helped us get the word out. We did put it on our website. But a lot of the, was kind of word of mouth through our water and sewer, um, department. So when they encountered a, an issue with a line, they were providing applications and contact information for our office. And so to kinda put, you know, so basically, the, the field staff was able to put them in contact with us. But again, unfortunately, a lot of times when, well, most of the time, when our staff went through to look at the eligibility, which is, do you own the property? And most, a lot of times, no. You know, do you meet the income qualifications? Yes or no? And so that, that was kinda the roadblock. But that's, that's how we, we got the word out, and, and that's kinda how we've been doing it, so.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry, Captain Moore. Thank you. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Item number five is to consider approving an amendment to the industrial district agreement with Coastal Caverns. Item number five is to consider approving an amendment to the industrial district agreement with Coastal Caverns One LP. And Todd Semino, our CFO, will walk you through the item.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, just for a little background, back in two thousand and sixteen, council approved probably twenty plus IDAs or industrial district agreements with, uh, local companies that are outside of the city limits but within our ETJ. One of those IDAs that was approved was with Coastal Caverns. And then they came back in two thousand and seventeen, council approved for a tax abatement with, uh, with Coastal Caverns for an expansion project that was known as Project Branch. So long as it had a total value or spend of, of minimum of a hundred and fifty million dollars. Since then, Coastal Caverns has reached out to us. They're, they're doing further expansions at their site. So what, um, what they want to do is get another tax abatement approved by council. These extra expansions would bring the total investment value up to three hundred and sixty-five million dollars. So now this expansion project is basically broken out into five phases. As listed in your agenda memo, phases one and two were already approved by council back in two thousand and seventeen. So what's before you today for consideration of approval are phases three through five. And the best way to, for you to get a handle on that is to look at the table in the back of the agreement. You'll see phases three, four, and five. You'll see that phase three has a value of ninety million dollars. And then you'll see the tax abatement schedule that's being requested for phase three. Phase four has a value of ninety million dollars as well. You'll see that schedule of tax abatements that's being requested. And then the final phase five is thirty-five million with its, um, requested abatement schedule attached as well. It should be pointed out that phase three, four, and five is the exact same abatement that Jefferson County has already approved for Coastal Caverns. And, um, we're seeking for you to recommend this approval as well.
Thank you. Okay. You've heard the reading. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. End of discussion. Councilmember Gates.
Todd, the way it looks like these abatements are proposed is that they, uh, start in two thousand and twenty-seven after I presume what is the completion of phase three. And then the, uh, next one will start in two thousand and twenty-eight, which I guess is after the completion of, proposed completion of phase four. Is that right?
Yes, if they want to be able to reach of these phases, it's stated in the memo, but not on this, this chart here. For them to get the, uh, abatement that's requested for phase three, the construction has to begin prior to December third, first, two thousand and twenty-four. If construction for phase three doesn't commence prior to that date, then they will not get that abatement scheduled. And then the same thing with phase four and five, there's a construction date at which they need to start to have these abatements in place.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carry. Next discussion, please.
Okay. Mayor and council, we have four discussion items today. Uh, the first one is to review and discuss a proposal from Bird Scooters to operate within the city. Uh, we're pleased that they're here today and I'd like for the council to hear their plans for, for Beaumont.
Mayor and council, oh, are we good? Thank you for having me today. My name is Mike Butler. I am, um, lead on our city partnerships team here at Bird, focused on, um, the south and the western corridor of the US. So right now, Chris, uh, who I've been speaking with over the last couple of weeks is handing out an FAQ document. I'll go over a presentation that should last about seven minutes or so. You can interrupt me for any questions. Uh, we can open up for some questions at the end of that. So here, I think what's, what's really important is understanding why we run our business, why this business started and why we do what we do. Um, and it really is to improve our communities and of course, improve the lives of people within those communities. Um, you know, we, we do that by being a transportation company. We're a micro mobility company is what the world calls us. We focus on shared electric vehicles. So we help people get from A to B, help people get to where they want to go, help people get to where they need to go. Now, if you, if you haven't heard of us, you don't know the history, we're a relatively new company. We founded this in two thousand and seventeen. We're the first company in the world to actually do something like this. Um, so we, we expanded from being live in, in one city in the US to now we're live in, in five continents, uh, twenty-five countries, almost four hundred cities. Um, and a hundred million times someone has trusted our vehicles to get them to where they need to go. So we eclipse a hundred million riding mark. Um, and we're widely seen as the most trusted provider of this in the entire world. And these really are cities, big and small. I, I, I think the general perception around this type of, of service is that it's only used in the big, dense urban metropolitan areas. Um, and we're here to tell you that's simply not the case. We're live in about two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty cities in the US, and the overwhelming majority of them are cities that sit within about fifty thousand population, a hundred thousand population. Fort Scott, Kansas has seven thousand people there. Um, you know, Nebraska City has six thousand people. So I, I bring this up because I try to get people out of the mindset that, oh, we're, you know, Beaumont's too small. We, we, we couldn't do something like this. And that's simply not the case. You know, I, we view Beaumont as, as a major market for something like this. Now, if you're unfamiliar with the service as a user, it's very simple. You would download the application, you would sign our agreement, verify your age, um, put your payment information in. Uh, you'd have to complete a series of videos and tutorials, um, and an acknowledgement of local laws, so you understand how to ride, how to park and the like. And then you take it off and you ride the same way you would a bicycle. Pricing is simple. Average ride's gonna cost you about six or seven dollars. Um, we also have, uh, a number of programs set up to where if you're enrolled in, in government assistance programs, you're a veteran, you're a senior citizen, you're a healthcare worker, we actually provide a major discount where you can in fact even ride for free. So our goal is not to just, um, shrink this for a certain type of demographic or certain type of person. We hope this is democratized and we do that through programs like this. A lot of people ask us, you know, what are people gonna use it for? Uh, I think you'll see a pretty even split between recreational use. So people use it because today it's a nice day outside and maybe you want to just go out and, and take it for a spin. Uh, the flip side of that is of course, um, a number of, of opportunities for utility. So people can use it to get to work, to get to school, to get down to the gym, to run an errand, connect to transit, you know, you name it. Um, and different markets interact in different ways because every city is unique, but this, this is what we've seen in other markets. So I'll, I'll pause right now. I guess what, what questions have, have come up already?
Do you have one with you today?
Yeah, it's in my back pocket. I don't, unfortunately. I think, um, you'd have to, to go maybe a hundred miles or so to try to find our, our nearest one. But no, I don't, I couldn't bring one with me on the flight.
So then, th- the next available place is possibly Houston?
It's probably San Antonio. Um, I'd have to take a look at, at a map on, on the nearest one, though. We're not live in Houston, though.
Okay. I'm sorry. Councilmember Durya. And then I'll get you, Councilmember Gates.
Do you have a place picked out for a local facility where you'll store them and charge them and clean them and things?
It, it's a good point. I'll, I'll, I'll pause there because in, in just a couple of slides, we talk exactly like that.
Okay. Councilmember Gates.
So I was, uh, at a conference in Houston and I saw a lot of scooters in Houston. It might not have been a bird, but, uh, why, why wouldn't y'all be in Houston? It's a major metropolitan.
I don't think there are any scooters in Houston. Maybe bikes.
Individuals, maybe?
Uh, yeah, yeah, maybe some, uh, folks are using it for, it's a private vehicle. But there's not a, there's not a shared program in, in Houston. Working on it, though.
All right. And, and then, uh, also, I see these for sale. I guess there's some differentiation between your product and the things you can buy, you know, at a store here locally that, but I've seen these motorized scooters around before. What's, what's the difference between your product and somebody just going out and buying one?
Yeah, so, so we do two things. I can only speak, I guess, for, for our business. We do have retail models that you could purchase. Every single person in this room could purchase their own private vehicle, whether that's a scooter or a bike. These models that we're talking about today were designed and built specifically for shared rides. So it's not just for one user who's gonna use it. It's built to be far more durable and withstand the months and, and, and years that these vehicles would be on the road. So they're just a bit more ruggedized, I'd say.
Councilmember Samuel.
Um, I, I think in San Antonio and Austin, I'm not certain, but I know in Houston, that's private industry, uh, private individuals, uh, on some of the parking lots at night renting those scooters. But the way that you all have it set up, as I believe, uh, you have, you contract with people, uh, each day, each evening to pick up scooters that are left out, recharge them, and get them back to location so that, uh, consumers can rent the, uh, the scooters. And you, you all use credit cards. Uh, you can, uh, rent a scooter by credit card or, um, other ways, other means. And is, is that basically the way that you all will be working also?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's all application based similar to riding Uber or something like that. Yeah, so you're not physically taking out a credit card. It's all done on your phone.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Councilmember Felsch.
Uh, I've seen the program in San Antonio, and I think it's a great idea. It says, as needed, we can add a feature to scan their ID or driver's license. Uh, is it, is an ID required to participate in the program or is it just something that you request?
It's a, it's a city to city case. I think the overwhelming majority of cities opt not to do this because there are a number of people that are there that don't have access to getting a driver's license. And we don't want to deter them from this type of equitable transportation. So it can be turned on at the city's request. We would suggest not until, you know, if it becomes such a problem or you're seeing, you know, underage riders that are, that are taking this, we can do that.
Do, have you had a problem with that younger demographic out doing what the younger demographic does sometimes?
Yeah, I, I think it makes, yeah.
Endangering themselves and/or others. I mean, have you had that problem?
I would say very minimal. Um, it does happen at times and, and, you know, I was a crafty sixteen-year-old at some point, as we all were. And it was pretty easy if, even if I could take another person's, you know, ID and do it. I think it's, you know, the same thing that happened to a fourteen-year-old could take their parents' keys and take it for a spin, you know, take their car for a spin. So, you know, we, we, we try to minimize that. Uh, if it does become an ongoing issue, uh, you know, there's a number of things that we can do. But we haven't been, we've haven't had to shut down a market. It hasn't become such a problem. Um, and I think that's where most people's questions are.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel.
Well, I did see a story, um, I think yesterday morning. And one, that, they were talking about some of the issues some cities are having with, uh, the scooters in that they're being left in locations that create problems or blocking sidewalks. Uh, that's one of those problems that you've had to deal with through growth. Um, have you all, and are these on GPS so you can actually locate each scooter individually? Is that correct?
That is correct. So every vehicle comes equipped with GPS, same GPS that's installed on our cell phones today, so we can find them within a three-meter radius. So any, the individual that we contract with who runs a local operation knows exactly where every vehicle is, what state it's in. Does it need to be repaired? Does it need to be monitored? Does it need to be serviced? Um, but to, to your original point, I think seeing these moments of kind of clutter some, um, or, or scenarios where they're, they're seen untidy is really just a response or result of the certain programs in a place, I'll name it, like Austin, like Nashville, like San Antonio, where, no exaggeration, there are thousands of these vehicles on the road, and we're not the only company doing it, right? There, there are five thousand scooters on the road and, you know, we only host a, a, you know, a chunk of them. That's not a scenario that you'd see in Beaumont. At least, that's not what we've seen in other comparable cities. We'd be talking about a very small conservative number of vehicles, very easy to, to monitor. You know, it's like the difference of taking one kid to Disney World instead of twenty. You know, it's just, it's just a numbers game at that point.
So what is the number?
The number we'd start with is probably around fifty to seventy-five. We'd want to see probably a certain level of density so that the students, the residents, visitors can actually find some type of value in it. And then we would ask that if we need to up that ante in increments of about twenty-five, that we have the freedom to do so at the city's discretion. And we would only do it if we felt like the market could support it. We would only do it if there was such ridership and vehicles were being used X amount of times per day and it made sense to add vehicles. It doesn't benefit us to add vehicles to a market if they're not being used. They should be sent elsewhere to be used.
And will it be a specific area that you're, uh, focusing on having the scooters or will it be citywide or?
There are probably some neighborhoods, parks, private properties that we would like to block out, and we can do that. We can program the vehicles to do so. I think you'll see a lot of ridership in the midtown, the downtown area. I'm, I'm certain university students are gonna use this as well. And I think at the end of the day, we just let the market determine where these vehicles should go. If we see that there's a lot of, of ridership in certain areas, in certain pockets of the city, we can continue to support that. Um, otherwise, you know, we, we kind of just let it have, you know, free rein and then trim down certain areas over time.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Liability.
Would you tell the council what would be the city's responsibility in the operation of this program?
The city has nothing. We're not asking for a single dollar. We're simply asking for your approval to use the city's right-of-way. That's why we have to do something like this because we are a bit unique in that way. We're not just, you know, a normal business with a, with a storefront. Um, but there, there's, uh, you know, there, there's identification clauses, insurance coverages that we have in the agreement, which I've actually sent, um, to Mr. Cooper here. So he can review them and tell you what to think, and we can go back and forth on what makes sense for Beaumont.
Councilmember Gates.
Okay, so I heard something earlier that was interesting to me. You're going to be creating jobs in Beaumont. Uh, people going by to collect these, uh, scooters at the end of the day. Uh, how many, uh, jobs do you anticipate creating?
So, yeah, I'll take those two parts. So what you're, the slide you're seeing here is a conservative estimate of what users are actually spending, mostly in the food and beverage space in all of our markets. So we're actually creating the, a, you know, revitalizing of certain local businesses um, because we find, and, and this wasn't our study, this was another university that studied this, that said, if you're riding a scooter, you're also more likely to go spend more dollars at a restaurant, at a bar, um, at a store, whatever that is. So that's one piece here. The second piece to, to your, your question, councilman, is about local jobs. We're gonna actually partner, not with a band of independent contractors or, or kind of Uber drivers, but really probably one to two high-quality businesses or entrepreneurs to run this business, to run the operational side of things. That's how we do this in every single one of our markets. And we call these folks fleet managers. I'll, I'll skip that slide because I think it's important. We call these people fleet managers. So they, in order to be considered as a fleet manager here, you have to have a certain type of, um, infrastructure, of resources to run the business. You have to meet a piece of criteria. You can't just sign up and we're gonna give you your scooters, right? Because you are an extension of our business. We're very selective and very judicious on, on who we're selecting. But this business, they share the revenue with us. So it actually incentivizes them. It benefits them to make sure vehicles are upright, in the right spots, tidy, being used. Because when you take a ride on one of those scooters in San Antonio, you're giving back to a local business. And that's what all these people here are gonna do. When they take their rides in Beaumont, they're actually gonna give back to that local business. That local business is gonna earn an income, and then in turn, they're gonna spend it in the local economy.
And following up on that, I guess, two, two things. Um, I guess there's sales tax that's gonna be generated every time that the city will get a percentage of that.
Correct.
And then, um, where will the scooters actually be operated? Sidewalk or street, or how does that work?
Always ridden on the street, parked on the sidewalk. So that, that's the distinction. Because we use the city's right-of-way for the parking aspect of it, but they're always ridden on the street.
Preferably in bike lanes if we have them, or does that matter?
Does not matter. In fact, the overwhelming majority of cities we operate in sadly don't have bike lanes.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Durya.
I noticed earlier you said eighteen plus to rent them. So you have sixteen-year-olds that literally can drive a car.
Yeah.
Is it a reason that we put it at eighteen when we can drive as a sixteen-year-old?
It's a liability thing. You have to be an adult to sign this waiver. Um, we've, we've toyed with the idea. I think there's a lot of benefit and, and I think sixteen and seventeen-year-olds should use something like this. But it's the fact that you are signing a waiver when you start. Anytime you rent a, a similar vehicle in, in another city or, or a similar type of model, you have to be an adult, right? So because that's not the case, uh, we've had to keep it at eighteen.
So one more, like, so basically even at a family aspect, let's just say husband and wife want to come out with their kids and take a stroll downtown. In that instance, are you saying the kid can't rent it on his own? What about a kid maybe getting on, holding on to his dad or his? What about a kid maybe getting on, holding on to his dad or his mom? If that an option or no?
So it, it's a one-to-one ratio. I think there's risks to doing that. I, I, I would not encourage someone to do that. Have I seen that done before? Sadly, yes. Um, same when you see people running through stop signs and doing things they shouldn't in a car as well. So it should be a one-to-one ratio. If an adult decides to sign up or have a, you know, unlock the vehicle for his or her fifteen-year-old, that person's just assuming the same level of risk as they would if they're allowing them to drive a car, right? So it's, it's gonna fall under that person's liability. I wouldn't encourage it, but I, we can't stop someone from doing that.
Councilmember Doria, and then Councilmember Samuel.
What's your, uh, your safety record? Are these things pretty safe as far as falling and injury? Are they gonna be highly visible to other vehicles?
Yeah, so, so in order for any of our vehicles to get on the road, they have to be street legal. So they come with headlights, they come with taillights, they come with brake lights. Um, actually more sophisticated than even a, a personal bicycle, but you don't have to have those things. I'm happy to provide a number of our safety reports that we've had in similar communities. I think the general idea is that you might see an incident once in every twenty-seven thousand miles ridden. That's, that's a number that we've, that we've had based on our incident reports, um, in, in our cities. I can't speak for other operators, but it's largely seen as, as on par with riding a bicycle. That's what studies have said, is that there's parity between safety with a scooter and a bicycle. And I think almost all cities globally are trying to get people to ride more bicycles, get more pedestrian traffic. Um, I don't think anyone's here trying to dissuade people from riding their own bike.
What is, uh, I'm reading here, what is exactly is a helmet selfie?
A helmet selfie is a program they put together to incentivize riders to, if they can have a helmet, wear, wear a helmet. So if this is a premeditated trip and you have a helmet on, you can actually take a selfie, send it to us, and we'll give you credits for that. We'll give you dollars back because we feel like that's encouraging the right type of use for this. Um, you don't have to do it, it's not required. Helmets are not required in almost all of our cities, but it's, it's an encouragement.
So that, could that be something we as a city could require helmets if we wanted?
I, I would suggest no. You would be kind of on your own at that point. Most cities don't require this. In fact, that's over ninety-nine percent of cities don't do it. Um, if it's not a bicycle law, I, I don't think it should be the same here.
Councilmember Samuel.
I've seen, uh, uh, a lot of the Bird vehicles all over San Antonio, but I've also seen a few, uh, most of those are scooters. But I've seen some that have seats actually so a person can sit down. Is that Bird also or?
Yeah, yeah, we do have electric bikes. We've rolled it out in a couple of markets. I would say for the context of this conversation or for Beaumont in trying to get approval and, and begin operations in the coming weeks, we would just be talking about the stand-up scooters. But I think as we get closer towards the summertime, if we do have vehicles that are available in the region, such as these bikes, and the city wants it, then yeah, I think that's something we can do.
Well, it wasn't a bike. It was a scooter with a seat.
I think I've, I've seen those. It's a company called Wheels. They're live in, in a couple of cities, I think like five cities compared to us with about four hundred. So I, I, I have seen this before. I've, I've never used it. It, it looks a bit frivolous to me, but I, I, I personally never used it.
Okay, any other discussion? Speak now.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just show this. Our, our proposal's very cut and dry. It's meant to be very straightforward. There's no investment for this. We know public transportation or investing in public transportation can be, one, unreliable and two, very expensive. That's not the case here. Uh, we'd also have dedicated, uh, point person to ensure the success of this program. This is someone who is, uh, an employee of Bird, who is there, who has launched and coordinated the launch of, of hundreds and hundreds of cities. Um, we're actually, the third point here is really important too. We're gonna give you access to all of this movement data. So where are riders going? Where are people taking this? Where are they picking them up? What businesses are they taking them to? And we're just gonna give this to you for free because we think that's really important. So what you do with it is up to you. Other cities have used this to invest in, uh, bike lanes, um, other programs, but what you choose to do with it is up to the city. Um, the number of vehicles is certainly something that can be talked about. I have a certain ratio in mind that I think would be useful for the city, but that's something that can be discussed. Um, and really we would love to get the approval as soon as possible, uh, via that pilot operating agreement and get going, again, I'll use the word, as soon as possible.
Mr. Semino.
Just have a quick question. So this would be an online sale. So you have no brick and mortar here. So would it be a source or a destination to sales tax? In other words, would we get the sales tax?
The city should get the sales tax. I'll, I can talk to someone about that and get back to you though. I, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Well, piggybacking off of his question about a brick and mortar, that is something that you would probably work out with the account manager because it has to be some type of, uh, set location.
It, it doesn't actually. So these, you know, picture being on, on, you know, walking down Main Street on one of the wide sidewalks and you would see three to four to five of these vehicles placed upright there and ready to be rented. So it's not a physical location. And why that's important is because it can also be, you know, fluid, which means that if there's events that are happening, there's construction that's happening that allows us not to place those vehicles there, we can place them in other parts of the town. So there would probably be maybe twenty to twenty-five of these locations that we would set and also the local person can help us because they understand the market and they live here. And determine those deployment zones, we of course call them nests because we're Bird and there's a ton of puns. So we have these nests of these, the three to five vehicles, and that's where they're placed. But there's not a physical location.
So there's a rack?
No rack.
No rack. They just kickstand.
Yes, does have a kickstand, yeah.
Okay, so there's a kickstand?
Yep.
And they're just placed out on the sidewalk?
Exactly.
And you just pick up and take off.
And I, I can send some photos of what we've done in other cities just to get a, a visual.
Okay, and I hate to say this, but in the event if there's an accident, you have a damaged, Bird vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
So the police come out, there's an accident. I guess the account manager would then be involved in recovering the property or?
So we, we have a whole fully-built trust and safety team for instances like this. Again, they happen much less than I think people think. They make for good headlines, but it's just not the reality, at least for our business. If there is a claim, it goes through the same process as any other accident, whether that's a car or bicycle or pedestrian. You know, there has to be insurance involved, there has to be an adjuster. The adjuster's going to assess what happened and then who was at fault. In almost all cases, sadly, it is the rider. You know, a rider runs a stop sign, a rider, um, you know, hits an, an, another person or something like that, right? So if that were to happen, um, which we, we don't see very often, but if that were to happen, it goes through the same process as any other case. The city is not really involved there. Um, and that's partially why four hundred cities are, are saying, "Yes, we're, we're okay with this, we're on board." There's really no difference between a personal bicycle accident and one of these.
Okay. Councilmember Turner.
Actually in San Antonio, when I went to training with Chris, a rider did hit my truck. So I actually experienced the accident and it kinda went out like the cops came out, insurance claim was made just to fix, I mean, got the information and I got my truck fixed. So yeah, the city of San Antonio wasn't involved, so I actually experienced that, so I know exactly what you're saying. Uh, the next thing I wanted to ask is, let's just say if we got to an instance where we only wanted it specifically in a certain area, how does that work? Say for instance, we didn't want it, let's just say we wanted only downtown, a little more university. If we ever got to that point, how would that situation work?
Yeah, I, I think you should take some of our recommendation. There's a lot of give and take, of course. So if you feel like there are certain areas of town that you don't, you know, you're very, uh, assertive about this and you think it's, it's not something that vehicles like this should be used, we can do that. But what we don't wanna do is dissuade your residents and your visitors and your riders from getting to a business, from getting home. You know, I, I tried taking an Uber earlier. It was really hard. Like I, I, I had to wait twenty minutes for it. I could've walked, I decided not to. You know, those moments, I'm certain, happen to everyone in this room all the time. So if, if it's something to where you feel like this type of business shouldn't be used in certain areas, we can do that. You could see here, we can set up two things. So you can, we, we program the vehicles to act in a certain way if they enter a certain zone. So if you wanna say that, "Hey, we don't want vehicles on this neighborhood or this park," well, we program them to, if that vehicle enters that zone, it comes to a halt, the rider's notified, they have to turn around. It's actually far more sophisticated than even a, an automobile. Cars can't even do that. So these are things that we've had to do in really sophisticated cities. Uh, you know, Rome, Italy, Berlin, Germany, uh, Chicago, New York City, LA. Those cities require us, the requirements to operate there is the size of a dictionary. I mean, the things that we've had to build and have to implement are so vast and so sophisticated. And why it's important to Beaumont is because we've already built it and we're just replicating it here. So we can do that, um, but we also ask that you take some of our recommendations because, you know, frankly, we've done it more than you.
So you, you, you would be able to, uh, say if we wanted to have it in the downtown area or in the university area. Uh, it can be programmed so that once you get outside a radiance of that home zone or nest, then it will shut down.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, y'all can do all that.
Yeah.
So it pretty much, uh, you can choose where you want the nest and a person can, uh, if there's no programming for a geographic area, that person could ride the scooter home.
Right.
And the contractor would have to go to that location to get that scooter when he's picking up the scooters.
That's exactly it, yeah. And that's, that's what we do in every one of our markets. I think people, you will, you will see people use this to get home, you will see people use this for recreational use and you'll see people use them for, from utility. Um, but yeah, at the end of the day, it's, we're asking for twelve months. There's no budget for it. We're just asking for your approval and same type of approval that hundreds of other cities have done.
Okay. Thank you so very much for joining us today.
Yeah, of course.
What, what's next? Do we need to sign a pre-approval agreement or do we have to see if there's consensus to go forward? How do we do this, Mr. Manager?
Well, if y'all are giving us the green light, which I think you are, we'll move forward and, and work with, uh, Bird Scooters and City Attorney's Office will tell us maybe what we need to bring back to council if anything, but we'll, we'll move forward and try to make this work.
Anyone object to moving forward? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next discussion item, please.
The next discussion item is to review and discuss, uh, possible improvements at various city parks. And this, uh, item will be led by Councilmembers Turner and Getz.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel, I actually attached, you'll see it in the email form. When we went over in the Vision Workshop about a month ago, we kinda identified what we saw was the top ten parks or the top parks in our wards that we kinda wanted to look at addressing first as far as park improvements, if everybody was interested. Today, since we identified the parks, I, I feel like it would be a good idea to kinda discuss some of the possibilities that could happen at some of the parks and see if it would be any interest in the council to move forward with actually looking at a certain amount of money. We might wanna budget and see if we can get in the capital plan for the future. So I just kinda wanted to put it out there and let's talk about some of the possibilities to see how y'all felt about some of these parks. And we're, wars two, we had Rogers Park and Pearlstein Park. And wars three, we had Terrell Park, Sprout Park and Central Park. And Taylor's Ward, well, one, we had Klein Park and Ida Reed Park. And Councilman Samuel's Ward, we had Magnolia Park, Collier's Ferry Park and Riverfront Park. If I'm, if I'm missing one of them, I got one of them wrong. I know we had some other ones that we mentioned like Charlton Paula, Alice Keaton and Palm Park. If we want to switch one out, make that in the top ten, that'd be great. But I kinda wanted to kinda see what are some things you guys might wanna see at some of the parks? I know we've already worked with staff and some of the basketball court upgrades have been an option and some other things have came about. I know some parks may not have the proper equipment for kids to play on, such as Central Park. You know, it's becoming a da, a danger, it could be possibly a hazard. So I kinda wanted to see as a council, some of the things that some people may wanna see at the parks and see if we can move forward and identify some funding to get at the capital plan and, you know, get some traction on it.
Councilmember Getz.
Well, one of the things that, uh, I wanted to see happen today, and I don't know if we did, uh, uh, Mr. Neal, did, uh, we invite the Parks and Rec Advisory Board here? I, I see Clark Baker's here, but we, we did not get a chance to... Okay, so what I'm, what I'm thinking is that I'm happy with going ahead and having a discussion today, but I do think our appointees to the advisory board absolutely need to be a part of this discussion. So we, we can discuss today, but I'd like to see this be put on the agenda, uh, again, to be revisited, to have the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, here. And so, uh, that's one of the things I wanted to bring out. The other thing is that, um, you know, I've, for a long time now, identified a need at Rogers Park for a dog park, uh, based on the comments that I've had from twenty-six hundred citizens. So, you know, turning that into a reality is, I, I'm interested in seeing how this process is going to be used to actually turn that into a reality. Where's that funding gonna come from? Uh, does this have to be something that's already in the capital program? Or is it something that we can just add in and take out from the capital reserve? How, how, I think that's all part of what this discussion item today needs to be about.
Councilmember, Councilmember Doria, if you would let me, uh, let our city manager make a comment and then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, we did not invite Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee because we didn't know what you were going to discuss today. Y'all placed this on the agenda. We had no idea what the specifics, still don't know what the specifics are, so that's why they weren't invited. You could've invited them. So that's number one. Uh, number two, if you wanna talk about, do you want me to explain how a project like the dog park would be funded?
Well, I, I'd like to address that first one first. Uh, I did invite my appointees. Uh, I see one of them here, the other one is out of town. Uh, my understanding was that a request was made from the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to send out an email to the entire advisory board, uh, by the Parks and Recreation Director. I don't think that happened. So I, I absolutely think our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which is tasked with meeting quarterly to discuss the needs in the parks, should be a part of this process. So, uh, yeah, I do want this put back on the agenda in the future, uh, in the very near future to go through this discussion and, yeah, I, I've, we've already had this conversation several times about how to get the dog park at Rogers Park in the capital plan, which it is now, and then to get it funded. And I think part of the thing that, uh, Councilmember Turner and I are suggesting is that neither one of us believe enough money is provided in the capital program to our parks. And we'd, we'd like to see more to our parks, so that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. One moment, Councilmember Doria, then Councilmember Turner.
I just want to say that I, I invited, uh, both of my Parks Committee members, uh, Mr. Charles Paul, Mr. David Harper are both here and sitting in the audience.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Me personally, what I would like to kinda do today and see if, how, how, how council feels about it is if we can identify, we identify these ten parks, if we can kinda look at some financials and some money that we want to kinda see if we can move forward and let parks and the committees identify some of the things that they want to do. If we can kinda discuss some funding and see if it's something we can look into.
So are you asking each council, are we looking at what we want in a park and then make a determination of, of what the budget, budgetary impact would be and where it's gonna come from? Or are we asking that a certain amount of money go toward, uh, each park? Or how, how are you proposing that this council, uh, wraps its head around what you're trying to do?
I'm looking at, we look at, let's say we say ten parks, we're looking at, let's say we say a million dollars, a hundred thousand dollars per park. I'm looking at something that, that's something we can probably look at if the council feels comfortable looking at putting it in the capital plan for the future or, I'm not saying it's something I wanna do right now. I kinda wanna know what does the council feel as far as?
So first, ten parks, you say a hundred thousand dollars a park, with?
A million dollars.
A million dollars. So you're talking about, are we looking at taking a million dollars and dividing it, uh, to these parks? And then where is this, is this coming out of our reserve or are you trying to get it into the capital program?
I'm trying to get into the capital program.
And is that for this fiscal year or the next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year. So, I would like to use this fiscal year to kind of look at the possibilities if council was okay with looking into that type of investment with the park. I just wanted to see where everybody was at on this.
So, I, okay, so I think I understand what you're saying now. You're looking at making sure we get a certain amount of money, say, $1 million, to input into the parks in Beaumont with using the 10 primary parks that's been laid out or so, and then looking at getting it into the capital program, not just into the capital program, but funding into the capital program for the 2023 fiscal year?
Correct. Mayor?
Councilmember Getz.
So, in my vision of today, it might be a little bit different, but what we're all talking about is improving our parks. And in my mind, there is a big difference in scope of some of these capital projects. We can spend small increments of money and make an immediate impact that probably doesn't even need to go for, before council. Example, Pine Street Park, I was driving by there yesterday, there's no net at the tennis courts. Can't play tennis without a net. That's a simple thing. Yeah, we, you know, that's easy. Some of the projects that Councilmember Turner has championed, which I agree with, improvements to some of our basketball facilities, that's under the $50,000 threshold, manager, that the city manager has discretion to do and it's come to council. And if we have a consensus on that, we can do something like that. Smaller things like that that can make an impact, you know, that's one thing. Then there's the more major things that...
Like a restroom?
Like a restroom. That's a long-term capital project that would have to be budgeted and planned. Racquetball courts, you know, that's a long-term capital project that would have to be put in the capital plan and planned for. That's something like that. But we can do some of these smaller things that will have an impact. And even the dog park, I would consider to be on the smaller scale because you're primarily talking about fencing. You know, projects that are, you know, $50,000 or less, or maybe right around the $50,000 range, if it is something that makes, can make a big impact in a park and benefit a lot of people, I personally don't have any problems with that coming out of a capital reserve at this year, as a matter of fact. So, yeah, that's where I stand.
Councilmember Turner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Doria, then Councilmember Turner.
On the list of parks, these are the top 10 parks, is that what this list is?
Yeah, kind of.
I know we gave you that list.
Yeah, we gave, when we went over the Vision Workshop, we gave, I kind of, we kind of talked about every ward, what council member looked at was their main parks. And we didn't want to do too many. So, of course, in your ward, it was 3, Mr. Samuel's, it was 3, and 2 and 2 in the other ones. But, yeah, this was the list that we kind of identified at the Vision Workshop.
I think when we were identifying what needs to be done, the list should be the top 10 in case of need. What parks need the most improvement, what parks need the most work. And also... That's kind of subjective.
That's the way it normally works.
Yeah. Also, I kind of, it would seem to me that the Parks Committee, I don't know if they could go around and see all the different parks, but that would be a good idea and then make recommendation to council and how to give us a starting point as to what improvements our parks need. I think that would be something.
Councilmember Turner?
That was my reasoning for saying that we wouldn't try to get this done into 2023 to give the Parks Committee in 2022 the opportunity to go and identify these 10 parks and let us know the possibilities, what they suggest. We can go back and forth and go from there and kind of give it a budget so we can know what can happen within that budget. That was one of the reasons that I kind of wanted to bring it to that point. And that's why I had said what I said.
Okay.
Councilmember Getz.
So, at the last Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, and I want to thank Clark Baker, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, for being here along with... How many members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board are here in the audience today? Okay, so we got 1, 2, 3, 5, I think, maybe? Thank you. Thank you all for being here. And one of the things that we talked about is having a bus tour. We got some new faces on the advisory board. I used to serve on the advisory board before I was a council member. And one of the things we did was we all got on this bus and went to each park and looked at them and made determinations of what we, as an advisory board, thought needed to be done. And then we could make those recommendations to the council. And we did that, and a lot of those recommendations were followed up on. And that's part of what you're tasked with doing. I want to see us get back to that. I think that's the way the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is supposed to be set up. I don't think that it should be just, you know, come to a meeting and get a report on what the city is doing. I think that there should be a proactive role. Not that I don't appreciate everything that the city is doing, I do. But I think that the role of being on the advisory board is to be proactive and make recommendations. And I'd like to see that happen.
Councilmember Samuel?
So, I want to make sure I understand this process. So, we are tasking the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to look at each park in the city or look at the parks that's been identified as possible, not exclusively. Should they find other parks that they feel would be more deserving and in greater need, they would have the ability to make that recommendation. But from that, once they've identified the needs and the wants of that particular area, then we will have a set number, say, 10. And once we get that set number, then we are going to look at identifying a certain dollar amount that will go to each individual park equally. Not necessarily equitably, but equally. Is that correct? Because there's a difference between making a park equal and equitable.
Well...
Because some of the major parks already have a lot of amenities that...
Okay, so, to address that, yes, there's a difference between equality and equitable. You know, we don't want every park in every part of the city to necessarily be a cookie cutter type of park because each park is unique and has characteristics. And some of the demographics that each park serves are, you know, unique to that area. So, there might be some parks where, for instance, you know, basketball is really, really big in an area of town and you might want to concentrate on putting a basketball court. As an aside, I talked to some of the BISD trustees today at lunch. There's a lot of tennis courts available at some of the schools that are not being utilized for tennis. And they would receive favorably the notion of converting those into basketball courts. It'd be simply putting some striping and goalposts up there, but that would be an easy thing to do. But going back to this, you know, parks in the North End, South End, they've got swimming pools. West End doesn't. And that's fine because a lot of the people in the West End have swimming pools. Maybe they don't in the North End and the South End. So, it wouldn't make sense necessarily to put in a swimming pool at a West End park because there's not a big demand. But particularly at Rogers Park, it's a very densely packed neighborhood with a lot of apartments and townhomes, and there's a demand there for a dog park. That might not be the case in some of the other places. There's already a dog park, for instance, at Ida Reed Park that serves some of the North End and the Altam. So, yeah, I understand there's a difference and I wouldn't want a cookie cutter approach taken to each park.
So, are we going to set gates as far as a timeline toward identifying the needs or the desires? And then, are we trying to do something that will correlate to our budget, beginning to deal with our budget and trying to get it into that sequence?
Yes, I would like to see dates. And I would like to ask, if you don't mind, can we ask Mr. Neal, when is the next Parks and Recreational meeting?
Early February.
Early February, okay.
Are we required to go to that schedule or could we have one sooner if we wanted to?
Have a call meeting.
You could have a call meeting, okay. I'd like to see it sooner. And I would like to also challenge our council. If you've got ideas of things that you want to see done at the parks, any park, you know, throw it out there. You know, we can only talk, Open Rules, Open Meetings Act requires us to meet and talk about things as a group. So, I would love to hear other ideas of things that council members want, but also want to defer some to our advisory board and hear their ideas as well.
Councilmember Samuel?
Well, I'm excited about having a, putting more responsibility on that committee because for a long time, not much came from some of the committees. So, with that, we can, we should be able to hear that and we should be able, that will be the voice that you've talked about. So, we'll see how that goes.
Councilmember Neal, oh, I'm sorry. City Manager?
We'd like to thank the volunteers that serve on the CD, you know, not the CDAC, but the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We should utilize them more. It sounds like you want the, you want the staff to, which we will. I think there's a big disconnect from what I'm hearing. I don't know if there's an understanding of the way this works. There are a number of projects right now in the capital program that relate to parks. There are a lot of projects in the capital reserve, which means it's in the 2022 budget. And those projects are funded, and I can tell you which ones they are. So, anything above and beyond that, if it's in the capital program, you've got projects in here right now that are not funded. And you just borrowed $33 million within the last 4 or 5 months. So, you're probably not going to borrow any money for a couple of years. So, then if you want to fund it in the capital reserve, that would be the 2023 budget. So, am I hearing you say you want to allocate $1 million for possibly 10 parks? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, you can do that. I can just tell you...
Well, I say, I say we need, this is something we need to look at because if we're talking about $1 million from the capital reserve, we need to know what other things that we see coming that's going to impact our capital reserve.
Are not coming.
Yeah, and not coming because we're losing some federal funds in our capital. Well, that's one of the things that I think we need to look at before we make commitments of a dollar amount.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put this on the agenda. Two council members did. But you need to have a full understanding of what you're getting into. If you mislead the public that you're going to go spend $1 million on park improvements, we make improvements every year. What happens, though, is the park staff looks at the parks like the two spray devices or the splash pad at Sprott Park. So, that's funded, the spray device is $90,000, new playground equipment at Sprott Park, $45,000. So, those are based on staff knowing the condition of those amenities and knowing if we're going to continue to have that amenity at that park, we need a new one, right? So, they're doing that throughout the year, every day, that's what they do, that's their job. So, they come to us and we put it in the budget if we have available cash to do it, and we do it. Or if it's something we need to borrow for, then we put it in the capital program. So, springing this today about this possibility of $1 million, things can change. Let's see what happens. You're probably not going to have $1 million of free cash next budget year to go spread across 10 parks. I don't see it, and I can tell you our CFO doesn't see it. So, what, if you want to go charge someone to come up with a dream list for $1 million, the better way to do that, the better way to do that is what we did after Hurricane Rita in 2005. We had a lot of cash, we saved the money, didn't go build it into expenditures. So, I came to council and I said, what if we built a new community center at, out near the Willard Library, Judge John Paul Davis, that's how we did that with cash. We built one at Alice Keith Park, we built one at Central Park, we built one at Rogers Park, all with cash. Came to council, laid out the plan, council approved it, and it was a lot of money. I can't remember, it was millions of dollars, okay? You could do it that way. Now's not the best time after Hurricane, after Harvey, Amelda. We're running all those expenses in separate accounts that we haven't gotten fully reimbursed for. There's a lot going on that you, I would hope you know, but you may not be aware of. So, you have to be careful to go spend $1 million of cash, taking $1 million in cash and just go spend it on 10 parks. You can do it, but it's a matter of timing. And back up a little bit, the better way probably to do it, if you wanted to, would be let staff come up with the best use of $1 million in our parks facilities. Go to the advisory board and say, here's the plan. Help us, give us your input, let's tweak it, let's work together. Get them to sign off on it, then come to council with a specific plan. But right now, these are all generalities and I don't want to have staff go start meeting with the advisory board. I mean, you'd have to earmark the $1 million first. Y'all haven't done that. You just, so there's a way to do this, but it's not the way you're moving forward.
Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Getz.
I just want to say that I think we're going about this the wrong way. You can't, you don't want to just allocate money and then figure out how to spend the money. We need to figure out what the needs are and then figure out a way to allocate the money for those needs. Back to what the city manager said, this council has some tough decisions here this next year. We got the fire contract that still needs to be, have some issues. We got the police contract that's coming up that's going to cost a lot of money. You got, there's a lot of financial needs coming from this city that this council needs to be paying attention to rather than just trying to figure out how to spend money. So, I just want to say we need to be cautious on that.
Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Getz.
I totally understand the aspect of being cautious and I understand the aspect of being conservative, but we state all the time that our city is in very good financial state and we have a very healthy fund balance. And I have heard this said several times, over and over and over again. And then when we start to talk about funding, we kind of start having these type of conversations. But I know we have literally looked at certain things and funding wasn't an issue whatsoever when it came to doing certain things. So, I definitely don't want to sit here and say that when it comes to this aspect. I made it clear, I didn't say that's something I want to go do right now. I said that's something I want to look into. We can get, we could challenge staff to identify funding and it's something we could possibly do in 2023 if the majority of the council wants to move forward. That's what I said. But I know for a fact, we have said on multiple occasions, we're in a very healthy situation as far as funding. And there's been projects where we do go out and use funding and we don't even have these types of conversations. So, I don't want to verity to that or make the citizens feel like that's the case because we have done things that have cost way more than this and we didn't say, have the conversation we're having today.
But I'm saying, let's find out what the need is before we talk about what the dollar amount is.
And I'm okay with that, but I don't want to say that we don't have the funding to do the project.
And, you know, I agree with what you're saying, Councilmember Neal, find out what the need is. But the need is going to be subjective to some extent because what one person thinks is a need, another person might not think is important. So, you know, we do have to have that conversation. It's why I'm inviting council members to weigh in on things that they think are a need. It's why I'm inviting the advisory board to weigh in on things that they think are a need. And it's why I'm inviting city staff to advise us as to things that they think are a need. Mr. Manager, you identified... Mr. Manager, you identified improvements to Sprott Park as being already funded in the capital reserve for this coming year. What other parks projects are identified in the capital reserve for this year?
We've got a spray device for ninety thousand, which we're moving forward with. I think we've already brought that to council. Forty-five thousand for new playground equipment at Sprott Park. We have three hundred and sixty-five thousand budgeted for the new lighting at the athletic complex, complex four, which you're aware of. A lot of other, you can, there's a lot of other facility improvements spelled out by line item. But related to parks, it's athletic complex, three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So, really, in the capital reserve, we're talking about two parks that are being funded for this year.
Yeah.
And, and so, and I appreciate both of those things.
Another thing that you don't see that are in the operating budget of the Parks Department.
Well, if I don't see them, then I don't know about them, so I'm asking you to help us see them. What, what are they?
We don't spell out every single item that may cost two thousand, three thousand, six thousand.
Right, you probably wouldn't spell out putting up new wind screens at the municipal tennis center.
Correct.
Uh, things like that.
That's correct.
But, something like that will make a big difference to a lot of people. So, I'm, in terms of getting bang for your buck, small ticket items, these are types of things that I'd like to see us try to do sooner than later. And for things like the dog park at Rogers Park that I've been waiting on four years, that I think the consensus of council is up here, that they want to see that happen, and it's in the capital plan. What I'm hearing from you now is that I've got to figure out a way to get that budgeted in the twenty twenty-three.
No?
No? Okay, then what?
That's not how it works.
Okay.
Then tell me.
Let me, can let me explain this, this is important.
Please do, then.
Yeah, so you said you've been waiting for four years.
Yes.
You haven't been able to get four votes to get it approved.
We've never voted on it.
Well, it hadn't even got to that point, right?
Well.
So, it's in the capital program, I'll read it to you.
I know it's in the capital program.
And so are about fifty other projects.
But not funded.
That aren't funded.
Not funded.
Y'all, we made a recommendation to you to borrow thirty-three million dollars. And we spelled it out, line item by line item, what projects we're going to fund with that thirty-three million. Y'all made a few adjustments to it, which you should have, and that's what you do, right? The dog park was not funded, it was considered, but it was not funded as a part of that thirty-three million dollars. That's up to the city council, that's not a staff decision. Y'all decided to borrow thirty-three million for specific projects, the dog park was not funded, and.
Mr. Hayes, you're not telling us that the only way to fund that is through borrowing.
Or cash.
That's right.
Right.
So, we, we could do it with cash.
You could do it today, if the five of you or four of you said, hey, go pay for a dog park with cash.
Okay.
That's not the reality, I mean, that hasn't happened.
Okay.
That's no one's fault, that's not the staff's fault, that's, that's on council. If the council wants to do something, all you have to do is vote for it, and four of you want to go do something, my job's go get it done.
So, so we're talking about cash now, and we're talking about being in very healthy financial shape. And while I'm not advocating we go on a spending frenzy in our parks, I do think that, as Councilmember Turner has said, we have been told over and over and over, we are very healthy financially. And if there's a way to spend some money that makes a difference in the quality of life of people, I think that we ought to take a look at that, and I'll, I'll address that going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Just to address, what has, where we are right now is a result of processes and possibly not knowing processes. We are having a workshop on parks, and what we're going to do to parks. That allows us to place a specific focus on parks. You say we talk about how healthy our fund balance is, how healthy the budget is. It has been, but we have issues, and that changes year to year. Depends on the income coming into the city, and the other expenses that's going out. That's why this budget process, at the end of the fiscal year, or before the beginning of the next fiscal year, that's when we put items into, we talk about items going into the budget. We either identify the funds at that time, or it remains in the budget as a part of a capital program. That's not saying next year, or year after next, how it's, when we go through the budget process. Right now, I, I think I recall saying that we're losing about a million, million dollars in federal funds that we, we've been receiving, that we're going to have to deal with next year. Is that, and, and, so those federal funds.
Two and a half million that was going to transit.
And we also have to deal with, uh, 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 some of these emergency funds that we've been receiving on an ongoing basis. There's some funds that's been, we will no longer be eligible for, is that? So, there are some things that, that will impact our budget that we have not dealt with. We've only, that's why we prepared for the twenty twenty-one budget back then. And now, we're looking at, well, we're now dealing with twenty-two, and then the twenty-three. That's why each year, it goes that way. So, to say that we keep talking about our budget being fine, yeah, I'm happy as hell that we have been on top of the budget, and the department heads have been working together to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. So, I just believe that, yeah, I don't take that lightly. You say, we are in a good position, but we want to continue to be in a good condition. I've been through situations where there was a loss in twenty million dollars in the city, and we've had to recover from that. I've been in the situation where we've had to fund these natural disasters back after back. So, I understand, and we, well, I've said enough, I.
Well, and I was just getting ready to say, before we, we move on, let's just summarize, and say that we will go to the park directors for them to give us the feedback, to look at those ten parks, to see what's needed, come back with a report, then, once we see what's needed, then we can make the allocation, as Councilmember Neal said. Don't go out and make the allocation then, of course, you're going to find a reason to spend it. Let's go out, identify what's needed, identify the problems, then come back, sit down with council, directors, park and recreation, committee members, and then, as a group, as a whole, then we all sit down and look at the parks. And we may not be able to fund all ten parks, because we have to always look at, we have hurricane season coming every year. And we don't know what's going to happen, and for that reason, we have to be cautious before we go out and make those expenditure, expenditures, or allocations. And then, at some point, we're going to have to pull, pull, pull funding back, because we will have to take care of what's necessary. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next topic, I just want to say that I understand what Councilmember Turner is trying to do, and I applaud you for trying to make our parks the best we can make them.
Right. And I don't think anyone is, is trying to take away from the fact that you always want to improve and make it better. But, we have to always consider.
Mayor.
Count the costs. Thank you, Councilmember Gitts, and we're going to move on after this.
I hope that the next time that we do that, we do have opportunity in the agenda item to hear directly from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, many of which are here today. And I guess the only way they can speak today is at the end of the meeting, under citizen comments. I, I value your time, I value your service, and I appreciate your willingness to be here today. And hopefully, we can wrap up, and then you can make any comments that you care to make at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
One more thing before you leave, my man.
Go ahead.
If you're okay with at least allowing parks, the committee to go look at some of these parks we are talking about, identify some of the issues, and see what we can kind of do after, in early January, maybe they have a meeting, and they can go look at some of the parks, and maybe by April, just identify some of the things that they see need to be improved at some of the parks. Then we could visit the fact if it's something that we can do financially or not.
Well, first of all, we're not talking about anything immediately.
No.
Uh, the next meeting is early February. That would give each one of the committee members time to visit the parks and the areas. And then, because this was last minute, just to call them, to ask them to be here. So, if they go out to the parks, they can take a look around to see some of the things that they can identify along with the park directors. And then, we will all reassemble at the February meeting, and then we can all lay everything out, and together, we can make the decision. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item was placed on the agenda at the request of councilmembers Turner and Gitts is to review and discuss various events held in the city of Beaumont, and the possibility of adding new events.
At this time, I kind of would like Emily to kind of come up and let us know the events that, there are city sanctions, the events that actually the city of Beaumont puts on, and kind of get a community a clear, clear view of what the city of Beaumont actually puts on versus, you know, other events you see.
Thank you.
Hi. Mayor and council, it's kind of a long-winded answer, but I'll do my best. So, our department oversees fifty-eight events that are city-sponsored. Some of those are things that we come up with throughout the year that we just want to do. Those are classic movie nights and partnership with Mardi Gras. But, the main ones that are in our budget are the Fourth of July, the Christmas tree lighting, Oktoberfest, and the Jazz and Blues Festival, as well as our partnership with Mardi Gras, but all those other events. Lunch at the Lake, Make Music Day, Jazz at the Lake, concerts, and those are all things that we just do as a department. But they are city-sponsored. And then, our clients do roughly four hundred events a year in our venues. This upcoming year, we're scheduled to do closer to five hundred, about a hundred more events than we did the year before COVID. Pretty big increase. We're just busy. People are doing events, and we have availability, and we have state-of-the-art facilities and great staff, and we help them out. It's a good problem to have.
Emily, okay, you said movie, movie night, it's funded by the city?
It is, we have sponsors that shore up a portion of that, but that is a, you know, an event, that, those are events that we produce out of our special events budget in our department.
Okay, Fourth of July, tree lighting, Oktoberfest.
Jazz and Blues Fest.
We haven't had the Jazz and Blues Fest for the last couple of years, though, right?
We had it scheduled and then canceled it due to COVID, so we, I think, only skipped that year, to my knowledge.
So, will we have it in twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
We will have it in twenty-two. You didn't mention Juneteenth.
That's not one of my department's events.
So.
I can only speak to the, the events that my department produces. But there's almost every department in this city does events. Beaumont Police does events, CBB, Fire, Animal Care, I might be missing a few, but every, I mean, almost all of them do events.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gitts.
So, what you're saying is that there's really an exponential number of events based on the department? Because things like Juneteenth, Bow Olympics, which was a CBB event, help me, what else is out there that's been?
The Beer Fizz.
Yeah, the Beer Fizz, the craft beer fest, which sells out in five minutes. Uh, we have a lot of them. Some of the things that we heard from citizens earlier today is reaching out more to the Hispanic community, and having something for Cinco de Mayo. Also saw on a list that was circulated, something like a Cajun Fest. Would those be city, under the city events, or would that be under parks? Or, where would those type of events fall if we were to add those?
That would be the decision that would not be made by me. We will do whatever, we'll do whatever you want us to do, but.
And just to follow up with that, speaking to the Latino community, do we have anything present that speaks to Cinco de Mayo, or anything that would target our Latino community?
So, so one thing that I can tell you about our department is, we work really well with the four hundred-plus events that happen in our venues every year. For instance, the Beaumont Children's Museum does a huge Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead event, inside the Civic Center. We partner with them, and on Friday night before, we show Coco at the Jefferson Theater for Classic Movie Night, and try to create a weekend around it, so that we're participating without overseeing their event. And that's one thing that I think that our department can, does well at now, and we can obviously expand on that without being the ones to host every single event that happens in this community. There's a lot of people that do really great things that we can support that already exist.
Right, you know, one of the things that I hear way too often is that after the event has happened, wow, why didn't they tell us about this, you know, and of course, I know you make all efforts possible to market it, and I appreciate that. And I think it's endemic upon the citizens to pay attention, because, you know, there's a lot of good things happening in Beaumont, a lot of good things done by your department, that, you know, if you look up, you might, you might see. I don't know if you can do more public service announcements, announcements on network television. I don't see much advertising there, but, and I personally would like to see more things done like that from, you know, in our other more conventional media, because not everyone does the internet, as well as younger people do. But, I think y'all do a good job of marketing.
I'm going to say, I would just, I have to agree with you. As wonderful and beautiful as the tree lighting event was, I had so many people that tell me they didn't even know about it. They're shaking their heads, yes, in the audience, a lot of people did not know about it, and it was absolutely wonderful. They heard other people talking, how great it was. I mean, it was just the perfect night, we could not have, we could, could not have asked for a better night, a better event. But for whatever reason, I mean, I know it was on social media, I know that we even mentioned it at council. So, I don't know what the answer is to say, to, to get it out more, because I know that we are advertising and doing it, and maybe we need to just advertise a little longer to make sure that, you know, it's, it's really out there in the community. Councilmember Turner.
Do we have a, a event calendar, like something synchronized that the citizens can go look at at the first of the year to kind of see how, how to flow?
We, we met on that yesterday with this new communications division. Lauren Monitz is in the audience, but we met with quite nine department directors yesterday, and she's going to organize and do that community, it'd be a city events calendar that she's responsible for, that she'll keep updated and fresh.
Councilmember, you.
Bill Shaw.
Bill Shaw.
It's been a long day. Emily, you say that the city oversees fifty-eight events, correct?
My department does.
Yes, your department, not, yes, your department, fifty-eight. Is there a point of saturation where you'd say, we really can't handle more? Maybe you're there now, and let me put you on the spot. In that list of fifty-eight, are there some events that it's time for us to let it go, that has just been unsuccessful, and perhaps we need to put our focus elsewhere, like Cinco de Mayo?
I emailed a list to you all yesterday afternoon, and if you, I don't, I think we have some copies, if you want me to pass them around. But, I don't think that anything on that list of the events that we do as a department need to go away. Some of them are new, some of them sell out in two hours, some of them are so packed that we're not, you know, we're looking at ways to expand them. I would not get rid of any of them to address saturation, I would look at it more like, not. I would look at it more like, not necessarily what we can handle, but what should the city, what should our department and the city be responsible for? Knowing that there are so many other people that do events that we can support as opposed to being the, the ones who are always doing the events and not really giving people an opportunity. No one's gonna come do an event the week before one of our events because they don't want to compete with it. And so we have a lot of people in the community that want to do things. Um, I would look at it like that. We are extremely short-staffed. We are doing a hundred more events this year than we did the year before COVID with the same number of people. We cannot find part-time help, but that's a problem nationwide. It's not just my department. So um, and then in addition to that, our, just for those of you who are not aware, our department also oversees the Lakeside Activity Center in addition to custodial services for several of the city-owned buildings, including the libraries, City Hall, Municipal Court. So we have ten people dedicated just to cleaning at night. Um, you know, we need people and more days in the calendar. Other than that, we can do whatever you want us to do.
Emily, do you see possibly, um, like, like you say, someone may not want to compete with your event? Um, maybe combining or working with...
Well, that's kind of why I alluded to something like the Children's Museum. They already do a fantastic Dia de los Muertos event. So we showed Coco the night before. We communicated with them. They promoted Coco. We promote their event because it's in our venue. Maybe there's something else we can do across the street at the Julie and kind of all work together as opposed to us saying, we're taking over Dia de los Muertos. We know you already do something, but now we're gonna do something on the same day across the street. And I don't think that that's how we want to act as a city. There's a lot of people doing really great things already. And most of them are in our venues, to be honest. They're all downtown.
Okay. Councilmember Baggett.
Okay, so there's one, two, three, four, five things that I'd kind of like to see us think about. And one of those has to do with the restoration of the Robin, Robert Morton Wonder Organ. And I know you've got some things that you're already thinking about because we've talked about it, but for the community at large. If, if you don't know what I'm talking about, the Jefferson Theater is home to one of, I think, maybe four of these types of organs in the country. And it was damaged in a hurricane. It's been a long painful restoration process. Uh, Councilmember Felshaw and I were fortunate enough to hear uh, some of the performance that was done after it was restored uh, by, by the guy working on it. It sounds wonderful. What I'd lo, I'd love to see is a return to some of those organ matinee Saturdays that we used to have with the organ club where, you know, we as children, but now as grandparents, could bring our kids out to see uh, matinees on Saturday afternoon at the Jefferson Theater. Uh, then go see some of the old Roy Rogers, you know, Lone Ranger type of things and just have fun and have the organ be a centerpiece of that. That, that's one thing. Uh, we mentioned about a Hispanic festival, something with Cinco de Mayo. Um, you know, the ladies from uh, Port Arthur that came up and talked about that. I think that uh, when you look at the demographics of Beaumont and uh, the percentage of Hispanic population, uh, yes, I acknowledge what the Children's Museum does, but maybe the city could do something as well on that. Um, I saw on your list Cajun Fest. We have a big Cajun culture here as well. And we have in the past, and city manager, I grew up in Port Arthur during the time when we used to have a Cajun Fest out on Pleasure Island that was wildly popular. And uh, you know, I think something like that uh, might, again, everybody, uh, not my thing, but a lot of people like crawfish and uh, you know, it's, you know, a big part of it. Um, international festival. One of the biggest events they have in Houston is an international festival. And there used to be a church here in Beaumont that was blessed to have uh, people from a lot of different countries and they did their own version of an international festival and they had a parade of flags. They probably had twenty-five countries represented. And then they had food booths set up for their uh, particular country's type of uh, you know, indigenous food that they had there. I could see something like that on the Great Lawn as being a tremendously successful event, you know, modeled after something that we do in Houston. And then uh, lastly, Oktoberfest. Uh, it's, it's great. We enjoy it. It seems a shame that it's only like from three to nine or eight, five hours. I don't know if there's ever any thought to expand. You go to so much trouble to set it up and then you're tearing it down. I, I don't know if it could be securely held out there for, make it a two-day event. Uh, we see what they do in New Braunfels with Wurstfest. It's, it's just a huge economic generator uh, for New Braunfels and that community, but uh, and I'm not saying that we need to overwhelm Rogers Park or anything like that, but maybe it could be expanded. It's such, something to think about.
Councilmember Turner.
It's, it's two events that I want to specifically speak to. And one thing, a city sanctioned event, that's something that I think a lot of the citizens may not have a good understanding of what the city sanctioned events is. That's the four main events that the city puts on. But it's two events that I would like to speak to as far as a city sanctioned event that I would like to see. Juneteenth, would it be a now a national holiday? I understand we may have a department that does it, but I kind of want to see it done on a nice level on a nice scale to the Fourth of July or something to that magnitude as big as Oktoberfest is. I think with Juneteenth being a national holiday, I would really like to see us as a city put more focus on it. And also Cinco de Mayo. I do understand that the Children's Museum does the Day of the Dead and I think that's a great thing as well, but I do think we're very rich in diversity and culture in Beaumont. And I kind of see those two things. I don't want to try to put too much on staff, but those two things, I definitely think we need to celebrate, you know, Cinco de Mayo and Juneteenth. I think they need to be council-approved event versus just events people do.
Well, I was gonna, go ahead.
So, okay, you have four council members that have been on the council for about two and a half years or less. So you've got to go back about five-plus years. The city of Beaumont, the Parks Department, held an event every year and still does at Magnolia Park. And the Parks Department was responsible for organizing and planning Juneteenth, okay? So the Ward One council member at that time and the Ward Two council member, Councilmember Getz, said, we'd like to have an event, something for Ward Two. And the Ward One council member said, we'd like to have an event, something for Ward One. So the council blessed it and said, alright staff, let's ha, let's have something in both of those wards. So Parks was handling the, the two events I mentioned, one at Magnolia Park and one out at Terrell Park, Juneteenth, right? Still continues today. So, because Parks was doing that, didn't want to overload them, Event Services, Ms. Wheeler's department, said, okay, we'll plan an Arts Fest on Calder and we'll do Oktoberfest out at Rogers Park. They all get the same allotted budget number, seventy-five hundred dollars, okay? But what happened was the former director, Lenny Caballero, and Emily Wheeler here, who's now the department director, went out, they only had seventy-five hundred dollars to work with, but they went out and raised money by going to maybe car dealerships and others and saying, hey, will you sponsor this event? And therefore, it's probably a larger event than Juneteenth, not because the city's putting more money into it, because you have different departments operating it with different skill sets. Some of the folks at Parks, that's not what they really do. That's not what they're tasked to do. It's more task, that's what they're tasked to do. So they went out and raised a lot of money and again, had sponsorships and yes, you have a larger event, for example, Oktoberfest. The, the Art Festival on Calder, I think we only had it one year, one or two? And then because of COVID.
One.
Yeah, we haven't had it in a couple of years. But that's the history of where we get today or where we are. So different departments operating these planned events. And then, you know, again, as Emily Wheeler pointed out, you have the CBB that may have food trucks out at Cattell Marsh and then they plan this year the Olympics. And the Police Department does, the cops with kids, the Fire Department does certain. So every department, not every department, but most of your operating departments do plan different events throughout the year to serve their purposes, like animal care. So if you want Juneteenth, are you saying you want Juneteenth to maybe be better, bigger? Um, you know, there's ways to do that, but if the council wants that, that done, then I would probably task a different department who does this every day to do it. That's number one. Number two, if you want us to add events, we're glad to do it. You just need to be specific on what events, because what happens lately is y'all throw ideas out and then you start sending emails, where are we on this? Where are we on that? Where are we on this? It's like, no, the council hadn't even decided what you want to do. One council member or two council members can't decide to pick events and start telling staff what events to pick and where. That's not how it works. Either they pick them or the council up here votes and says, we want a sanctioned event for Ward Two like you did five or six years ago. Then we have the clear direction to go do something. Councilmember Samuel and Mayor Mouton know exactly how that works because they've been involved in approving it.
Councilmember Baggett.
So I think that's why we're having this discussion. And, you know, we need to do this as a council. And uh, you've heard from myself and Councilmember Turner where we both agree that we want to do something uh, uh, you know, to do something with the Hispanic community. And um, as far as Juneteenth, I'm certainly open to uh, hearing more. I mean, there's, I don't know if you're looking at terms of more people coming out there because there's a lot of people that come out of Juneteenth or doing...
This is my opinion. We, we kind of, we kind of just, just to piggyback kind of what the manager said, I'm in full agreement. You know, we have a, someone that's kind of considered an expert at events, a national holiday event. I understand we have a department that's doing it. But me personally, I would like the person that's the expert at that particular thing, would it be in a national holiday, being over it, so we can make sure it's to the best magnitude it could be at. So that's just my opinion when it comes to Juneteenth and Cinco de Mayo.
Did you say that we have two events now for Juneteenth?
No, it's one.
Just one, not two? Okay.
Well, and let me say this, um, when I was Ward Four council for Juneteenth, I went out and I raised my own money. One year I gave out uh, bicycles. I gave out gift cards. Um, I had about, um, I think seven or eight sponsors. I had a sponsor banner and those sponsors donated the money uh, through the city. And the city made those purchases and they were brought out to the event on that day. It's not about the number of people because it's well-attended. It's usually anywhere from usually six to about eight thousand people out on that Saturday. And there's been some Saturdays where it has totally been washed and rained out. Uh, but of course you can't control that. Um, so it is a, it, it, it's a great event. It's a big event. But I would have to say, i, if it's events, it needs to be under events. I don't think it should, Parks should do this and events should do that. But that's something we can decide as a whole, as a council. Not trying to put more work on you, Emily, because it is a big event. Uh, Juneteenth has been. But I also think we do need to celebrate Cinco de Mayo because at this point, it is not celebrated like Juneteenth and Oktoberfest. I mean, you have the, the Children's Museum, but as a whole citywide, there's not a Cinco de Mayo festival. Councilmember Baggett.
Mr. Manager, I'm presuming that Parks Department and the Events Facility, uh, Events Department collaborate and work together on some of these events and...
No, they don't.
Not much?
No.
Okay.
They're totally separate.
All right, well, uh, one of the things that the mayor mentioned was, as a council member, you went out and raised, found your own sponsor and raised funds.
I did.
And how, how would that work for us if we wanted to follow that lead, Mr. Manager?
Councilmember, she said they shouldn't be doing that, but what, that's what staff does.
But staff didn't do it, so I did.
Right, I mean, she did that as, she, that was separate and apart from the event, which she can do, but... So, am I hearing you want event facilities to take Juneteenth and run with it? Is that what the consensus is?
I, I think for the, the, the four major events that we have, I think they need to be, if, if it's an, an event, it needs to be under events. I, I think so.
You know, I, I'm, I'm happy to work with staff to do whatever direction you give us. This is, this is unprecedented. Just want you, but, and I know that's why Councilman Samuel has the look on his face because, you know, these were, these items were put on the agenda by two council members. So they need to be specific what they want and then they need, they need to be talking to y'all, meaning are there four more of you that want to go do whatever they're proposing? And if there is, then I'll have the clear direction to work with staff to get it done. So, we are where we are right now because two councilmembers put this on the agenda. I would ask them, be specific what you want and then let us see if, again, there's agreement, we'll go do it.
Okay, so Juneteenth, can we?
Okay, hold up. So you said you were very specific?
Very specific. I said I wanted to see council-approved events with Juneteenth and Cinco de Mayo. And I would like it to be under, those two events, I would like them to be under events.
And, and I guess Councilmember Turner, what the manager's asking and what I'm hearing is, he wants to know more of what do you want to see in those events or specifically Juneteenth that you don't see now? What kind of things that would change it if it was under events? What, what, what other things would you like to see?
The magnitude of the quality vendors, like you go to Fourth of July, you see, you see Rudy's and you see nice vendors to that magnitude. I kind of want to make it to the scale of where we can go to Juneteenth and see the same quality of vendors and different activities and different things going on out there.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Doria because that's his Ward, that's a Ward Four event. So, Councilmember Doria.
I know you said it's uh, the Parks have been doing Juneteenth. I, I wouldn't, I don't see why, I would hope that you would approach Parks and work with them. I think they did a good job. And I don't see why two departments can't work together to get this done. At least go to them for advice, get ideas from them, or else to me, that'd be like a slap in the face to the people that put it on from Parks last year, because they really did a good job.
They've done a great job.
It's like we're taking it from them. We don't think you did a good enough job. We're gonna give it to events. I, I would think you could work together. You could speak to those folks, find out what they did, work together to improve the event as a whole.
I, I'm glad you brought that up because our departments, we have twelve department directors. They work extremely well together. Every department, every department director, every one of them gets along, every one of them works well together. So, you have division managers down here that have planned mostly the events at Magnolia Park and Juneteenth. So, we, it, it's hard for two chiefs to run an event, meaning you really need it to be under one. You know, unless that department's asking for help, those departments, I can tell you, are going to help. But if someone's been doing an event for fifteen-plus years, they're probably not gonna want to change what they're doing. Meaning Councilman Turner thinks it could be better, which I can. But, you know, that's depending on who's looking at it, who, in what ways can it be better, uh, you know? So, when you start getting into the micromanaging of events, it gets difficult.
But, but that's an easy fix from what Councilmember Turner's asking. All, all he indicated, from what I've heard so far is he would like to see better quality food vendors. If Emily could get Jimmy the list of trucks or, yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's an easy thing to do. You know, that's, that's not hard, is there?
Then I've got people up here saying that a different department should take it and run with it, so...
Well, I'm, I'm, I understand how you say, it's an event, so it should be under events. But I, I would just hope that they would consult with the people that have put it on in the past, working together to make it better. It's, of course, I understand it's only one person has to be over the event, but people could work together to put it on.
True.
Councilmember Felshaw.
I, I misunderstood earlier and I understand that there's not two events for June nineteenth or Juneteenth. I, I understand there's only one. The reason I asked that is because I was looking for a way to improve by perhaps combining the two together. Uh, but we're, I think, city manager, you're looking for direction and I'm in favor, of course, of supporting, considering the demographic... And I'm in favor, of course, of supporting, considering the demographic of Beaumont, and the fact that our Latino community is growing, which is comprised primarily, I'm sure, of Hispanics. I support completely Cinco de Mayo and improving our Juneteenth celebration. It's just, I guess it's a question of, does it fall under events? Do we leave Juneteenth with Parks and Recreation? I guess we're looking for direction as a council. I don't do this for a living. You do.
Do you, okay, so let's start with Cinco de Mayo. Does the council want us to move forward and plan another event geared towards the Hispanic community? If so, that's, that's easy. I would say it's up to four or more of you. I would task Event Services to do that. And then you talk about Juneteenth. Do you want to leave it in Parks, or do you want us to take it and move it to Event Services and let them run with it? Okay, look, I want to make something clear, too. In 20 years, we've downsized our workforce by over 80 positions. Not too many government entities can tell you that, right? And those of you that I've worked with for a long time, Councilman Samuel, almost 30 years, I've never come to this council and said, we need more people, ever. But if you start saying, let's go add a bunch of events, or even two, it's gonna take some more people to do it right. They're doing more events than they ever have right now, but those are more venue-driven events. When you go plan an Oktoberfest-type festival, it takes people to plan it right, staff it correctly. I mean, there's a lot to it. They make it look easy. It's not. So if you say, one, I would say you gotta go make it work. If you say you gotta take two or three and add two or three big events to do them right, you're probably gonna need to add two people. Councilman Samuel, you've never heard me say that in 30 years.
Well, I was gonna say...
That's the truth. You're gonna need some people.
You know, put my money where my mouth is. That if we, if we did give you two more events, and that was a question, Cinco de Mayo, I think yes. Uh, Juneteenth, I don't know. Whichever works the best. But if we're going to do this to you, then we as a council are gonna have to find a way to help you hire staff. You say you're understaffed now, and that is a problem across the board. We're gonna have to find a way to help staff you so that you can meet the demands of this council. And I, because I am concerned, that's why I asked you earlier, of the 58, is there any we can perhaps say, you know, this one is just not working, and it's dying, so let it die. But you're saying, don't do that.
They do that all the time.
Okay, so...
Council's never involved in any of those events.
No, I...
They pick them. I don't tell them what to pick. They pick them. They plan them. If it doesn't work well, the attendance isn't great, they'll tweak it, maybe try it again, or they won't do that event again. They'll come up with something new. They do that every year. And y'all aren't involved in it, and I'm not really involved in it.
Well, but understanding the demographic of Beaumont, I do support these two events, and I do support giving you the staff you need to do this, if that's what happens.
Well, but on the other hand, if Parks was doing it anyway, why Parks can't work with Emily
They can.
in, in making it a success. I mean, there's no reason why they can't.
Success now.
And we're not...
I don't go every year, but I have gone, and there's a ton of people out there that are having a really good time. So how do you measure success, you know? That, every one of us looks at that differently.
And I, and I said from the beginning, I mean, people participating and it being a great, successful festival, it always is, especially Juneteenth. Of course, Oktoberfest is also. But when you look at the caliber of Oktoberfest and you look at the caliber of Juneteenth, it is clearly two different status.
Planned by totally different departments.
And that's the point.
Yeah, one of the, but one of the things, Mayor, that...
But I've got people up here saying, don't move it away from Parks. And I've got others saying, move it.
And I'm not saying that.
Well, one of the things, Mayor...
Okay, Councilmember Turner just said, who said, don't, don't move it?
I never said, don't move it. I said...
Yeah, I don't think anyone has said, don't move it. We said, work together. Councilmember Samuel.
Okay. This is not the first time I've heard this. Juneteenth started at Riverfront Park. Then it went to Magnolia for a short period of time. They've always taken suggestions. We don't have to create new events. We need to tell them specifically what we'd like to see added to the event. Cinco de Mayo started at Riverfront Park. And all we have to do is let it be known what we want done. I think it's a slap in the face to our departments when we don't give them direction, and we tell them they're not doing the job.
Number one, the city manager just said that we don't have the input.
We, as a council, have an input on what we want to see at events, not individuals, not subjective items added to the agenda. That's what's bringing us to where we are right now. Individuals want certain things, but the proper way to do it is bringing it to where we are now. Getting a consensus. If there's a consensus that we want to have more food trucks at the event, then we would say, we want more food trucks at the event. If we want to have movies at the event, this council says, we want to have movies at the event. We specify, but not one individual coming and saying, this is what I want to see at an event. That brings us to, this is a body, a legislated body. We have to let administrators do their job. Through our guidance as a group, not individuals, but as a group, we tell staff what we want to see, coming from the people, through whether it be a committee in the city or individuals coming to us individually at that podium. That's how we hear the interest of, I'm not, it, Facebook has been good, but Facebook continues to be a thorn when it's not used to the advantage of all the people. And particularly this body. But we are nothing by ourselves. We can't tell any director of a department what we want done. That's improper. We, as a group, come to a consensus of what we want done. We give that directive to the city manager, who then directs his department heads as to what is to be done.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gitts.
Okay, so, Emily, if I'm not mistaken, and you jump in if I am, one of the things, one of the big things about Oktoberfest that makes it successful is we sell beer. And I think that the beer distributors help us with Oktoberfest in some way. Is that right, or?
They help set up the beer that we sell.
Okay, so...
That we hire, there's a vendor that sells it.
All right. But there's no separate economic, financial thing from the vendors, from the beer distributors?
No, they're sponsors, but physically, they don't set up...
Okay, so they are sponsors. So one of the differences between Oktoberfest and Juneteenth is we don't allow beer sales at Juneteenth at Terra Park. Is that right?
I can't answer that.
That's not true?
That is not true.
We, we as a city bring sponsors out?
No, but we voted, we voted that any city-sponsored event can sell beer. Juneteenth is a city-sponsored...
Juneteenth is a city-sponsored event, so that, that's, that's what I'm kind of alluding to. Councilmember Turner, you talked about one of the differences.
City manager, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong.
Okay, so, so if you wanted to take Juneteenth to another level, it could even be done through, continue through Parks, but I've heard, you know, you want better food vendors. And, you know, if you wanted to have alcohol out there, that would make it more like Oktoberfest. But I don't know if you want to do that or not. That's just something to throw out there. And certainly for Cinco de Mayo, you know, I think it would be appropriate to be able to do that with taco. I can't eat Mexican food without beer, I'm sorry. So, you know, you know, I think that would be something that we would, you know, possibly want to look at if we wanted to do Cinco de Mayo as well.
I don't know why they've never sold beer at Juneteenth while I was Ward Council. I, I do know that it hasn't been done, but it can be done. And why it wasn't done, I don't know. I don't know if it's a difference of Parks doing it or events doing it. You can. Well, Councilmember Felsch.
I'm sorry, so am I correct in assuming that there's a consensus on the council to do Cinco de Mayo underneath Emily's department? And then as far as Juneteenth, or have we, where are we on, does it stay with Parks or does it go to Emily? I'm just, I guess I'm looking for understanding where this council sits. And that's why I looked at you, Emily, and said, look, I trust you. You do a great job. Our staff does a great job.
Everyone does a great job.
So does it stay with Parks? Does it go to your department? I don't know. You do this for a living. That's where I think the council's looking for direction. Is there a need to move it? Or can it stay with Parks and Recreation and just, we see some improvement? Okay, I guess that's what I'm doing. I'm looking for direction. I think we've settled for Cinco, Cinco de Mayo, I'm assuming there's a consensus to go to you. What do we do with Juneteenth so that we can move on?
Was Juneteenth initially planned, that was one of those where each, something would happen in each, each ward?
Each ward.
Okay, so, that's, and then Oktoberfest came as a result of trying to add it. And so these were not events. These were ward functions initially.
Oktoberfest was part of the Concerts in the Parks series, just like Juneteenth was. And they had that $7,500 allocated. And I think it was originally done by Parks. But then, as the manager said, Lenny came in and made Oktoberfest something bigger, and went and got sponsors, and that's how that developed.
So did that work? For the most part, did that work, having one event for each ward? And then, well, functions in the ward, and then allowing...
It worked, it did work. We had, we had two operated by Parks, two operated by Event Services. We stopped the art festival on call because of COVID. So, you know, we probably talked to the councilor and said, do you want to continue it? Because it was kind of a ward deal. And what's happened in the last six months is one councilman said, I don't think Juneteenth's done well enough. Could be better. And it's like, okay, tell us how it can be better. And then, you know, does that councilman want to allow us to go move it to a different department? That's, it's really, it's really up to us how we go do it.
So what...
Do you want to see more food trucks at Juneteenth? That's easy.
Okay, so this council can move Juneteenth from a function in ward, in wherever it is, and just allow it to go to events as a special event. And then we look at, again, the four functions in each ward.
Or Cinco de Mayo, which you alluded to. We, we had Cinco de Mayo events and festivals.
Yeah, I know.
And some of them, as you know, weren't well-attended.
Right.
Shifted on to other things.
But we can, I don't have a problem with location. Juneteenth can go to events, maybe, and then we are Cinco de Mayo. It's up to us. So...
So if Juneteenth is a Ward Three event or Ward Four?
No, it's not anymore. Because it's, it's no longer in Ward Three. It moved, it moved out to Terra Park.
I don't know if it's a Ward Four event, but Terra Park is the biggest park, and it's in Ward Four. So it's a city event that takes place in Ward Four.
Exactly.
So what's the Ward Three event?
There's none.
There was movie nights at Magnolia Park.
Yeah. So...
Okay, so what's the...
What's the conclusion?
So if the council wants to make Juneteenth and Cinco de Mayo, or Juneteenth or Cinco de Mayo, a, an event, I guess we need to really determine, we need to start having an event in a city park, or a community park, or a neighborhood park. We have to look at what we are, what are we gonna do? And we have to be uniform with that, and treat them uniformly. We're not gonna have a big event at a community park or a neighborhood park. It's gonna be at a citywide park, like Central Park, Terra Park. And hopefully, we'll have, I don't know if this will be, this is not a ward park either. But that's what we need to come to the conclusion with.
Okay, so if we say we want a Cinco de Mayo celebration at the event center once a year, and it's in your department, as far as the details, we don't want to, you don't want us getting into that, correct?
No.
We don't want to get into the weeds of that.
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure we understand. We're talking about Cinco de Mayo, once a year, during the month of, oh, is it?
May.
Is it May? Okay, so we got May.
May fifth.
Fifth. Just want to make sure, I just celebrated it at my church, but I want to make sure I'm getting this right. So we, we, we want it in May, event center are similar, and it's in your department. So that settles that issue. You don't want us getting in the weeds, though. We don't want to talk about, we're gonna have this truck, or this event, or this, this...
Some people will try, but no.
But we don't want to do that. We trust our staff. Then on the Juneteenth, are we going to leave it with Parks and Recreation and just enhance it? Or do we need, feel the need to move it to?
Let me, let me work that out with staff. I'll meet with both departments and develop a path forward, and that's really up to us. Because I'm... I just, I'm hearing from y'all, let's just try to make it better.
Because I'm assuming, Councilman Turner, his desire is just to make it better. That's, do you care if it's at Parks and Recreation?
See, when it comes to events, it's a huge difference when you have someone that's considered an expert at doing it. They understand how to go out and get sponsorship. They understand how to go out and get the beer vendors. They understand how to go out and get alcohol vendors. But when you don't normally do it all the time, those are the things that you're missing. So what I'm saying is, I want to make sure events are all at the, especially with Juneteenth being a national holiday. I want it to be at that magnitude.
So you want it moved to Emily's department? You would prefer that?
That's what I would prefer.
That would you would prefer, so that the, that the attention can be given to it, that it needs to be given, correct?
Yes, and it'll be a council-approved event. I think, right now, it's not a council-approved event.
Okay, I can support that.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
If I'm wrong, that's fine. Yeah, that's why I would like that.
I want to make sure it's not misunderstood. A professional is one that is paid to do a job. We have professionals on our staff.
Yes.
And that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm talking about staff. Emily, that's, she's a professional. She's paid to do it. That's what I'm, that's to make myself clear.
And I can support doing that, but we gotta help you get some more staff, is all I'm saying. Please know that I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is. If we're gonna move this to you and dump this, not dump this on you, but if we're gonna hold you responsible for this event, then we need to hire people.
Okay. We're done with that? Let's move to the next discussion item. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, this item was placed on the agenda by Councilmembers Gitts and Neeld to review and discuss the city redistricting process, and it says, and census information.
So, really, I had tried to ask this question last week, and I was told that it wasn't on the agenda, so it couldn't be answered. But I really wanted to hear a report from where we are in the redistricting, redistricting process. I wanted to see if we had received the census tract information for the various precincts. I know that the county, even, even today, they were finalizing some lines at the county level. So I have to feel like we have that information in-house now. But if we don't, then we don't. Where are we on that? I don't know if that's a Chris Boone question or Tyrone Cooper question.
So, I can let you know that the census has released the redistricting data down to the block group, down to the block level, census tract level. So that data is now available.
Okay, so would the next step be to hire a law firm like we've done in the past, and like the county's done, to help us start assembling potential maps?
That's a council decision. The way it's occurred in the past, we have hired a consultant who hired a demographer. And for those of you who were here when we did the 2010, after the 2010 census, several maps were prepared and presented to council. And the council ultimately decided on one for the, I guess it was the 2013... And, uh, the council ultimately decided on one for the, uh, I guess it was the twenty-thirteen election.
So is there an alternative way to do that without hiring a consultant or law firm to do that? Well, I guess we could all do it ourselves, but we're certainly not experts at that. And, uh...
It will become very political as it did back when we did it in twenty-twelve. Uh, I would suggest and recommend that you hire outside, uh, third-party person. As opposed to it being done in-house with staff. But that would increase staff's responsibilities in that respect.
Well, there are law firms that specialize in doing this, and I, I would agree with you that we need to hire a consultant that specializes. I think almost every municipality does, and every county does that I'm aware of, they hire an outside law firm to do this. Uh, when would be the appropriate time to put it out that we're looking to hire somebody?
I've already been contacted by a law firm. As a matter of fact, the firm that prepared it for us before has reached out to me to see if we would use his services going forward. But again...
Borquetz, is that right?
Alan Borquez, yes.
Okay, so then do we as a council have to give our consensuses to say yes, do that?
Well, we would do that at appropriate time when we know we have the proper numbers. And we would just move forward. It's, we're, we're still timely in that respect because we're looking at doing this prior to the, uh, twenty-twenty-three election.
Well.
And the way it worked the last time, we concluded and adopted a, a new map, uh, in September of twenty-twelve for the twenty-thirteen election. So we're, we're timely. We're within time.
There's a hard deadline, uh, Tina, that we have to have all of that in by, when is that?
When we did it back in two thousand and ten, of course, I went back and looked at our, looked at our records from the twenty-ten census. Um, the information was submitted by Borquez's law firm, um, I think in October, to the Department of Justice.
It was November.
It was November, October and November.
And we don't have to do that.
Right, and we don't have to do the preclearance.
So that, that takes that pressure off of us.
There is no pressure. When we get the numbers, we're, like I said, we're timely. We, we, we have enough time. We're looking at the twenty-twenty-three election. So we have enough time.
But there is still a, there's still a deadline.
What deadline are you speaking of?
There's, there's a deadline that we have, well, people that are gonna sign up for council are gonna need to know what their wards are gonna look like. I'm talking about the individual council members. They're gonna need to know what their wards are gonna look like to know how to campaign and who they're...
Is that January twenty-twenty-three? That's January twenty-twenty-three.
January of twenty-twenty-three. So we have till then to come up with maps.
If that's the deadline you're speaking of.
Is there another one? I mean, we don't have preclearance anymore, so...
No, we don't.
You know, we don't have to submit a map for preapproval.
And wait for, no, and we don't have to wait for that approval process like we did before.
So we're talking a year from now?
As long as we can have it done before the next election cycle.
But back to Councilman Getz, well, I guess there's no reason, there's no reason to delay the process if we don't have to.
And we're not intending to.
They don't have the numbers?
Yes, as soon as we have all of the numbers.
We have the numbers.
You have the numbers now?
We have all the numbers.
So we, we have the census data. The, the technical part becomes how do you apply the census tract, block, and group level to precincts and things like that? That's where it becomes very technical, and that's where, uh, basically a demographer and an attorney becomes very helpful. So we've budgeted for this fiscal year to hire someone. I think the idea was to do it, um, this next calendar year, first half of the next calendar year. And again, going back to how we did in twenty-ten, was I think September of twenty-twelve is when we adopted the map. So that would put us, in this census, that would put us in, uh, you know, the summer of twenty-twenty-two, so...
So we're ready to move forward. We only got this information last week?
Yeah, it was released a little bit earlier, but we, we just started looking at it last week.
Yeah, okay. So you have the information?
We have the data, yes ma'am.
You're gonna move forward on it? And there's really no deadline. We have until January of tw- twenty-twenty-three to make sure that it's done.
We need to have that information as...
No, we want to have it done as soon as possible.
Before twenty-twenty-two, before the twenty-twenty-three election because we have to provide all that information to the county.
Correct.
So that they, and to the voter registrar's office, so that they can have that information as well.
So... So do y'all see any problem that we wouldn't have?
I would think September, October, we need to wrap it up.
The first thing that they would do is identify where the population shift has occurred.
Right.
And then formulate maps for council consideration. That's, you know, that's not a overwhelming task.
So, so, so Tina, you've clarified one of my, we do have kind of a deadline in advance of January. It's, you just said September of twenty-twenty-two.
I would think in September twenty-twenty-two or Octo- October, November, as long as we can wrap it up and get that information to the county before January of twenty-twenty-three, when we start the election process.
Okay, so we're about ten months out.
Right, and then since we don't have that preclearance, we don't have to wait that additional, what did it take, Mr. Cooper? Two or three weeks to get the preclearance from the DOJ back then? And since we don't have that process, well, then that, we should be able to get done a little quicker.
So can, can we just tell Mr. Borquetz, yes, we want you, and please start?
The Borquetz is who we decide to hire.
Is that, is that a council decision?
No, that would be a consultant, a consultant is a manager and attorney decision.
Can we request that y'all, is there a consensus here that we have, uh, the attorney and the manager find a consultant for us, uh, as soon as possible and start it?
But that's the process. Right, that's the process. You're gonna do that anyway.
Okay.
That's gonna happen.
So does that satisfy?
It's gonna happen soon.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. What did our population do from twenty-ten? Do we have that number?
Roughly one hundred and fifteen thousand. It went down by, I think, about two-point-seven percent. And, um, I did, I did preliminarily look at the census tracts between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. And, you know, again, the population is shifting to the north. The center of the population is shift, it continues to shift to the northwest. So I would expect that, you know, those, those precincts would shift accordingly.
Northwest is primarily Ward One, but do you see some shift into Ward Two as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is, is that information available for us?
So, um, I have the data, and I worked on it this weekend to map it. So I'll, I'll go ahead and start trying to get y'all some maps. But again, I'm not gonna have the precinct and voting precincts, things like that, but I can show you a comparison between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. So you can kind of see how that shift looks on the census tract level.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, they complete all of the, um, the, the discussions. Okay, now's the time for any citizen that would like to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk, to the front of the room. She'll call your name. When it's time for you to speak, the green light will come on at the end of your three minutes. The red light will come on. Um, do you have any?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Landry Roundtree, fifteen sixty-five South Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Mr. Roundtree, before you speak, thank you everyone for staying and being so patient with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Muton and City Council. Sometimes back, I was in town and I was out away from this setting. And I saw an attorney in this city that I was, uh, have stood on different opposing sides in, in the past. And, uh, I saw him though with his, uh, I don't know if it was his child, his grandchild or nephew. But this young man was on, uh, some crutches that go around his hand, and he was struggling to walk. And I saw this man in a different light than I had seen him dealing with him in, in maybe a, a more formal setting that where he did his, his, uh, profession, and, and I, I might have challenged him. So what reason I'm telling you that is, it touched my heart to see him because at the end of the day, we're all made in God's image. And a lot of times, when you see somebody in a different setting, it might give you a different perception about them or seeing. And, uh, this goes back a long ways. Two thousand years ago, a great king found himself in the setting of a lowly manger in cattle. So sometimes what you see is not necessarily, the setting doesn't always denote the significance. So I think at this holiday season, we might not be so quick to, uh, rush to our opinion. Uh, we might want to, boy, if Holiday Inn could have captured Jesus and brought him into their, their facility, what a big selling point that'd be today. So if, if we could each maybe, uh, just be a little bit closer, look at the little small things a little bit closer. I'd like to, uh, wish each one of you a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Years. Mr. Cooper, I would like to, uh, wish you the best in your, uh, retirement. And I read that you were planning on spending more time with your family. I think that's very commendable. And forty-plus years at anything is, uh, very commendable. And so, uh, appreciate your service. Also, my wife is here sharing, and I appreciate her being and talking about service. She, uh, and I, this coming Saturday, will celebrate thirty-seven years, or I know I will, hopefully she will be. And, uh, I don't know if you need to congratulate her or offer your sympathies. But, uh, thank y'all very much, and y'all have a very blessed holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. God bless you.
Thank you.
Albert, and I think it's Eby, five fifty Mollum, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Albert Eby. I am the general manager of BMT Zip, Beaumont Transit. Um, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today about some of the initiatives we're working on at Beaumont Transit. Um, first, I'd like to recognize Mr. Hayes, who has already stepped out, Mr. Cooper, and especially Mr. Boone. Um, and all the city departments that, uh, we've worked with at, uh, Beaumont Transit on many city, uh, transit management of Beaumont projects. Um, your staff is very professional. Um, they've been great to work with, and we certainly appreciate that. There's been a lot of challenges in transit over the last couple of years, as you're well aware. Uh, COVID-nineteen has been very hard on our industry, um, not only with things like social distancing and masks. We still are under a federal mandate to require masks, which has now been extended into March. Ridership has taken a big hit, as you are aware, um, because of the, uh, the COVID pandemic. So our job over the last year, since we've taken over this contract, is to make sure that we are providing the right amount of services to the city of Beaumont and the citizens of Beaumont. I think Mr. Boone said at best, when, um, he challenged us to help him right-size, uh, the transit system here in Beaumont. We do appreciate your investment in transit, some vans today. We wish we would have been able to get the natural gas buses, but certainly supply chain issues have made that, uh, impossible at this point. And knowing the condition of our fleet, um, certainly getting new vehicles is more important than, um, some of the amenities we were trying to get. Um, the buses are scheduled to go into production, uh, the big buses are scheduled to go into production in early February. They take a couple of weeks to build. They'll have to be delivered from, uh, the West Coast and hope to have them in, um, in service, uh, in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. We've made a lot of technology upgrades, upgrades, uh, we've included some service vehicles, and with your help, um, we are growing the system to make sure that the services that we offer and the vehicles and the, uh, the facilities and infrastructure needs that we're providing meet the investment, uh, that the city is providing. As you're aware, we've been working with Amalgamated Transit Union, Local Ten Thirty-One, to come to an agreement on a collective bargaining agreement. There's a very generous offer, we believe, on the table right now. Um, we base our decisions, our offers, our negotiations on solid data. We get data from all over the country, not only from the systems that First Transit provides service to, but from, uh, folks who collect data. Law firms in Washington DC that collect data on not only transit systems, union transit systems, rate of pay benefits, um, size of the system, the number of passengers served, uh, the size of the community, the size of the budget. So we feel that, um, this meets with the goal of, uh, the city to right-size the transit system, the offer that we have available on the table. So, thank you again for your...
Go ahead and finish what you need to say. Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, that being said, I would like to say that transit is a very difficult, difficult job. Um, our folks don't just drive buses around the city in a circle all day. They deal with a lot of very stressful, um, environments every day, um, dealing with, uh, you know, road closures, dealing with traffic, dealing with passengers. That may be very difficult. Um, so it's a very difficult job. But we do feel that the offer on the table, uh, takes that into consideration. It is in line with what's being offered and what's available to cities, um, the size of Beaumont throughout the nation, and especially Texas, and especially the local market. Uh, just recently passed was the Jobs Infrastructure, uh, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, um, of twenty-twenty-one. It was recently signed by the president. The city of Beaumont will see a, what we believe to be a significant increase in not only formula funds, but the opportunity to apply for discretionary funds to continue your investment in transit with federal support. But we take into account that the federal investment is a taxpayer investment. It's a state taxpayer investment, and it's a local taxpayer investment. So one of the things we try to be, um, when we come up with budget numbers, when we come up with suggestions for infrastructure, when we come up with service recommendations, is to make sure that we're providing services that meet the needs of the community, but that are also, uh, responsible to the taxpayer investment in the services we provide. So getting to where we need to be, we appreciate your patience. It's been a, it's been, it's been an interesting year. Um, a lot of things have, have been happening, and we feel that come spring, when the new buses come here and some of the other infrastructure investments are implemented, that transit in Beaumont will be redefined. And it will certainly be one of the best transit systems, not only in the state, but in the United States for a city our size. Um, we've just finished a root efficiency study that we've prevented, presented to the city. We're working with the planning staff on, uh, dialing in, uh, what recommendations of that plan, uh, would make the best investment here in the community to right-size it. One of the recommendations that, um, I talked to Mr. Boone about would actually, um, take some of the lower-performing routes and combine them. So possibly additional efficiencies in the operation of Beaumont Transit could be, uh, realized. So, um, again, we're looking not only at the services we provide, but the investment that the community and the city council make in our transit program. We've got to find that balance of the right amount of service and the right amount of taxpayer investment. Uh, I'll be honest with you, transit, I've done it for well over thirty years. Transit is down in the trenches. It is hard work. It is, uh, very underappreciated. Uh, folks see transit as, um, something, uh, that is more of a human service program, more of a, um, a program to provide, uh, a type of transportation, um, that may not seem as, um, uh, amenable or as, uh, maybe attractive as some other forms of transportation. And certainly competing with the automobile in places like Texas where population density is not very high, uh, make that even more difficult. But that being said, what we provide is a very important service to the citizens of Beaumont. Uh, there are a lot of people that rely on us to get to work, to get the medical appointments, to get to school. And without, uh, investment in public transportation, these citizens would be left out. We've also heard of some challenges that we've had at Dan and Baum Station. As you are all well aware, um, vagrancy has been a problem since we've gone back to fare collection. Uh, we've had some huge challenges with, um, illicit activity, with vagrancy, with some things that we would consider, uh, public health, um, challenges. We've worked with the Beaumont Police Department, and I can say that they've been very, very, uh, uh, great to work with. Um, but they're challenged. Their, their hands are tied in many of these, uh, instances. And this is not a Beaumont problem. You know, we look to our partners throughout the country and ask them, you know, how are you handling chan-challenges in the public facilities? And they all kind of give the same answer. It's challenging. Uh, we hope that we've made some recommendations to the city that will improve these. We're never gonna solve them. But certainly, I think that we're on our way to addressing the problems and trying to make them better. So folks that ride the bus know that they can go to Dan and Baum Station and be able to catch a bus and not have to deal with folks shaking them down for money with illicit activity, with unhealthy or unsanitary conditions. Uh, so finally, um, thank you again for your partnership, for your investment in public transportation. Uh, and on behalf of, uh, BMT Zip, I wish you all a great and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Jones, ten forty-five Dusset Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. I will not be before you long. I do want to, um, say to Mayor and Council and, uh, management, as well as the administration, for the clarity on... for the clarity on the funding for items number three and four, especially when it came to CBDG funds uh that I knew some residents uh could benefit from, especially with um personal sewer issues. Uh, I do also um like to thank uh Councilman Turner, Councilman Getz, and Councilman Neal for their discussion items, especially when it came to uh various city parks. I do, as President of the Neighborhood Association, I want to bring to uh, Chatham Pollard Historical Neighborhood Association, excuse me. I wanted to bring to uh the attention of mem-man manager and council. Our play area in the Chatham Pollard Park is a hazard, I will say. Uh, and uh, there are several rotten, well, I wouldn't say rotten, but um-
Damage?
Yeah, over, over time. Uh, this playground uh has been in the park since the dedication of the park, which is uh two thousand and three. I'm sorry. Yeah, two thousand and three. Uh, again, if we could uh address that, I did speak to the Parks and Recs Department. I think that model is no longer in, in, in existence, so replacing those particular platforms, we're gonna have to find that out. Uh, I do wanna say uh congratulations on the consideration to our first Assistant City Attorney, Sheree Reed, um, as a, I guess like a classmate sorta kinda, or somebody that I went through school with. It's um, it's gonna be phenomenal to see um somebody young and intuitive uh into that position. To our City Attorney, Mr. Cooper, thank you for your service. And we uh hope to see you just passing through the city. Thank you again for your service. Again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your attention.
Thank you.
Is it Tony Legon, Legon? Tony Legon, forty-two forty Allenas, Beaumont, Texas?
Hi, guys. Wow. I came out here just to be an elf today and have fun and tell you guys how much I love and just, I'm so happy to be a Texan now. I just smell, I came to just bless you guys. I bought, I bathed, these, these cookies were hot when I got here. And I bought them for each and every one of the, the, the city council members. Um, uh, I, 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 I might have to do the mayor's lady later, but if I don't have enough, but I really came out here just for that, just to smile and, you know, because I'm going on vacation. And wanted to tell you how happy and how humbly, humbly grateful I am for you guys to appoint me, uh, a lowly citizen like myself on two committees. And um, boy, they got me running for some precinct now, and I'm like, oh, God, you know, so much, so much, so soon, so fast. And I, and guess, I see him all the time during the meetings for the homeless. I thank you for that coagulation as you live in Boone. I seen him, I seen him twice. He's at the homeless, and you're everywhere, the building and committee, I mean. But I just wanted to thank you guys and just say, God, please, can we just get along? Look at what happened with that tragedy, with those cities being just leveled. You know, anybody can become homeless, like I said, one day here. So let's just, you know, just have a good season. I got tears in my heart right now for those people that have lost a lot, you know, so just, just, I'm going on vacation for a few days. And I feel kind of guilty because we have so much, and now these people don't have anything. They've lost lives. And you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fairly educated. I know why we celebrate Cinco de Mayo, you know? And you know why we should celebrate Juneteenth, amen? So let's just love on each other and just have a good holiday, and let me give you guys some cookies. And I wanna take a picture, if the mayor will allow me, you know, of my handsome, no, my beautiful members. You know, I, I wanna, I don't wanna say it's crazy, 'cause it's a certain person that don't like me to say it's crazy, but it is crazy that I've come so far here in this city, uh, such a short time, and I'm just overwhelmed, and I'm very happy, and I'm ready to do what I do for a citizen. Oh, yeah, I got my, my um, my nonprofit really set up really good. I got the, the bank account. I got my business thing. I'm gonna get a, they gave me a small credit line, and I'm just going crazy with what's going on with me. It's, it's crazy. It's crazy. You know, I just gotta say that, and just thank you guys so much for, and let's just continue to love on each other, 'cause I do love all of you. And I have been drinking, I drink honey with my tea every day so I can become sweeter, and I think it's working, amen? So can I give these guys some cookies?
So Tony, if, if you'll give those cookies to uh Tina, and then at the end of council, uh-
'Cause they're labeled, and I, they're, they're labeled with my, my stickers on, this pretty little girl with books and cookies, 'cause it's Tony Sweets and Treats, 'cause that's what they are, you know, so. But they're, but it's only seven packs, and the one that's got three is for my guy over there, 'cause he's my wardman. I want you to give Gwen one, 'cause she, that's my girl, but you can have, you can have the two. But give Gwen, your wife, one, okay?
I wasn't gonna tell her, but I guess I have to now.
You got to, you got to. Okay, thank you, guys.
So we'll, we'll take the group picture just before we recess to executive session. Thank you so very much, and Merry Christmas to you.
Sure.
Thank you, guys.
Louis Vaughn, ninety-six fifteen Map Street, Beaumont, Texas.
He love.
Did he? Nicholas Hunter, ninety-one fifty-five Map Street, Beaumont, Texas.
It's not gonna be as loud as Mr. Vaughn, I can assure you that. Afternoon, Mayor, Council, staff. Uh, first, Kyle, thank you for sticking through everything that you've done over the last however many decades. You and Mr. Cooper have been able to keep the ship afloat, so we thank you for your service. And uh, I'm really excited Sheree's gonna be taking over as the uh City Attorney, so we can be moving in the right direction. I was asked to come up here today because the uh park's agenda, because the park item was gonna be on the agenda. And in our neighborhood, Amelia, Pearlstein Park is a place that uh you, you, people are always there. One of the things that we've been asking for are really, my nonprofit, we were knocking on doors. We put together a survey to see what the citizens of the Amelia area wanted in that park. After, the first thing they want is for the railroad to actually mow the grass next to their property, because, you know, it, Highway ninety, as you're leaving Beaumont, when you look at the railroads that are right there, the grass is overgrown for miles. I know y'all have talked about it at the Vision Workshop, but it, we have laws on the books to enforce that our neighborhoods don't have to look like that. The railroad has just completely neglected their property, and they continue to do it, so we were asked that y'all enforce that. That was the first thing that my neighbors asked for. The second thing, out of six hundred and eighty-two responses, eighty-seven percent wanted a dog park at Pearlstein Park. So throughout this process, I came to you guys in May and said, hey, should we stay in Beaumont? We've decided we are going to continue to stay in Beaumont and fight for that neighborhood. With the, the real reasoning behind the dog park at Pearlstein Park is that the members in that community, not only do, you can't walk through the neighborhood without hearing a dog bark, I mean, you can't go two houses without hearing a dog bark. But more importantly, they feel like the attention and that that dog park would bring, and the traffic that that dog park would bring, would make more people aware of the negligence that the corporations have been doing in that neighborhood, rather than being a part of that community and contributing. They just continue to leave their property the way it is and, and tell us that there's nothing that they can do about it. So we'd like for y'all to enforce the laws that are there, not just on the people of Beaumont, but for the corporations that get the tax abatements to bring the jobs here. And then obviously ExxonMobil can just tell them that they don't, they're no longer needed anymore. So with the way that you guys have everything set up, we are very excited about the council that we have here. We're asking that you guys put at least eighty-seven percent of the people in that neighborhood, want a dog park there. And then I think the next up was uh twenty-seven percent want a half-court basketball goal. So thank you for all that y'all do. Continue fighting the good fight, and let's have a dog park at Pearlstein Park.
Thank you, Nick.
Uh, I think it's Taylor Osborne, twenty-four nineteen South Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here today on behalf of my youngest child, Carter Reese Osborne, who was killed on May eighth in Tarrell Park, yes, the day before Mother's Day. Three minutes will never be enough to address all the concerns that I have with that day and what could have been done differently. However, as adults, we should hold ourselves to a higher standard when it comes to ensuring our children can live in a world where they're not only safe, but welcome to enjoy their life, especially in a park in the grass the day before Mother's Day. The same park that once had a sign at the entrance banning all ATVs. However, someone was instructed to remove that sign. Not only did they remove it, but they replaced it with a sign that was discontinued over four years ago. Kaboom, the owners of that sign do not endorse Tarrell Park, and their signage will not prevent someone from bringing ATV into that park. So I would love to know why it was removed and who instructed the city workers to remove it, and why replace it with an outdated sign from a company that does not endorse that park. There was police presence that, that day before we made it there, that supposedly saw the ATVs, yet did not enforce the city ordinance that we have in place. Each person in the park in possession of an ATV should have been fined and/or towed. Why weren't they? Why did the ill-trained BPD wait eleven days after my son's death to take my statements? Why would a district attorney go in a local newspaper and disrespect the grieving family and mitigate an open case and grossly misrepresent his client, my innocent child, in the facts of his case? I've learned that among us ignorance is bliss, with the higher powers in Beaumont, but I am not going to stop fighting for my son and my other children, as well as the children that reside here. Do you have to watch for boats while you enjoy dinner in your home? I didn't think so. My son's last image should not have been a thousand-pound speeding machine hitting him in the middle of his forehead while he played with his brothers. So instead of negotiating million-dollar deals for new parks with our tax dollars, we should be talking about how we can ensure the safety of our children at the parks that we already have. Myself and thirty-eight under, other citi-, thirty-eight hundred other citizens, excuse me, would like to see ATVs banned in public here, and other improvement, improvements made to increase the safety of our children. They are all of our future, and it is up to us every day to ensure their safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Gans, eleven oh seven McFadden Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, council members, Mayor. Um, I presented this case several times before. I even dropped off some paperwork. Just recently got employed, and I have uh no trespassing on me against um the city. I've been trying to speak to Mr. Ebi for a while. Every time I come to the office, he's either busy or not present, according to staff. It's um, I never had an issue riding on the bus. All the times I rode on the bus, I never had an issue. Always um, I had, I've had an issue, I'll never forget, in, in, in the month of April, whenever I was waiting on the bus one time, and it was late, I called and asked him, could they track the buses? When they tracked the buses, I seen them coming around the corner. The bus driver pointed at me, blew the horn, and kept going. I called back again, this time I was furious, and I had a few christ words with um the manager, what's her name? By the name of Ms. Tammy. They got me on no trespassing ever since then. I guess she um had some type of vengeance or whatever, and tried to get back at me for me saying some foul things. I apologized many a times. I apologize. What's done in the past, I can't take it back. I made corrections with my life. I'm trying to take positive steps. And I'm asking, I know y'all, and I thank y'all so much, every last one of you guys, for trying to help me out in the situation I'm in. Just trying to help me back ride. I thank y'all. But I've been really wanting to speak to Mr. Ebi for a while. Hey, it's a lot of people up there with no trespassing that's riding the bus. I know for a fact. But um, if they wanna say that I'm doing this, and I've done this, and I've done that, what's done in the past, I might not be able to deny, but I know some things that a lot of drivers are doing that I don't think Mr. Ebi is aware of. But I'm not gonna throw stone for stone right now. I'm gonna take the high road. I'm just asking for y'all to have some mercy on me. I'm a man that's been down and out and haven't gave up the fight. I know in life you gotta keep striving, you gotta keep going forth. I need some help, and I thank y'all for helping me. I know y'all made phone calls, especially Mr. Chris Duriel, Mr. AJ Turner, Ms. DeMaile, Ms. Muton. I know y'all have all made pro-pro-pro-progress and um, and, and really tried to help me. But I'm just asking Mr. Ebi if he would give me a chance to try to ride back on the bus so I can try to get to and from work. That's all I need, is a chance to get to, to and from work. I'm not gonna try to throw stone for stone, 'cause I know it's, it's been, I'm not gonna quote, quote no name, but I've seen this group text that went out, y'all got any type of dirt on Mr. Lance Gans? And so I went over there and talked to Mr. Leje, and Mr. Leje showed me a, okay, he wouldn't show me the names, but he showed me a stack of people. So I'm just saying, please give me a break, and let me start riding again.
Thank you, Mr. Gans.
David Pete, sixty-three fifty-five Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I wasn't gonna be here today. Um, I was sitting at home watching uh the meeting partially. And um, what caught my attention was the discussion about the Juneteenth in comparison to the city and their other events. And I became concerned, because I have been reaching out uh for information uh about the Juneteenth. Has it been funded? Is it a city function? Is it city, you know, um, has a council approved it? And um, and one of the things that came to my mind is, is that uh when we're talking about, you know, being, being impartial, we're talking about parks and recreations, we have to consider that there's a lot that goes on in that, okay? Parks have been around for a long time, but when you, if you actually get out and go see these parks, then you can make the adjustments and the assessment needed to be made in order to find out what's really going on with the parks. But what really concerned me about the Juneteenth is this here. Um, I had requested some information uh about it, and I received something here from um the city, City Clerk's office here. And it's in regards to the um, uh, in regards to the uh budget for the Oktoberfest. And it says, uh, "Good morning, Todd and Christine. Can you please check into number one? Is there a budget by the city approved to fund this event? Please return the response documents to the City Clerk's office by ten twenty-nine twenty-one." And it states here, the response here says that um, the budget for this is twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars for a Oktoberfest, a beer fest? And you guys are up here talking about appointing a date and a month for Juneteenth and, and Cinco de Mayo? But you got a budget of twenty-five thousand dollars for Oktoberfest? This is an insult to every citizen in this city that is trying to get something done, but because of this and one individual who petitioned for that, and those who signed off on it, you should be ashamed of yourself, because you're talking about Juneteenth, and you don't even have a budget. You don't even have an, an approval, but yet you're talking about it. It should have been done. And other issues going on in this city are budgets. And I heard Mr. Haynes say about this, this, of the funds that are being allocated for different things. They are, they are wish lists. But how much wish list do you need to fund twenty-five thousand dollars for an Oktoberfest? Which is a beer fest, which is not an event that is actually uh looked at as being something pivotal to the city. But Juneteenth is, because of its history, and let's not forget that. Because we live in a society where everybody is not treated equal. So this here is an insult, and I, and I, please, don't, don't, don't do, do me a favor of, of trying to impress me about something you're trying to do with Juneteenth, 'cause you can't impress me. I've already been disrespected by this. Thank you.
Um, Charles Paul, fifty-six fifteen Phelps Road, Beaumont, Texas.
I don't have no cookies, no doughnuts. How y'all doing? I'm glad to be here today to witness the city government in progress. I was invited by Mr. Duriel. I'm part of the parks uh volunteering to help out. You know, I talked with my granddaughter the other day, and I, I talked to her like she was an adult, and I messed up. I didn't explain to her why I was trying to be careful in case of some danger. But you know, watching y'all up here today, uh, I like what Mr. Turner was trying to say. As a citizen and me watching and listening, I thought he was saying, for instance, if we had ten parks, one million dollars, a hundred thousand each. Now, we all know you gotta count the cost, which y'all was all arguing, you know, going in a circle about. But it may be ninety thousand for just a hundred, ten for the other, thirty thousand, whatever, you know, but have an open- have an open ear and listen to the man. Don't shut him down, or not just him, anybody, whoever have a, a idea, you know? Juneteenth, he said it again, whatever it is, but I think it ought to be on the event, because it is an event. Now, parks is parks because parks mostly black, but this city has always been separated against us against them. That's the way the people look at it. You talk about the demographics, people leaving the city, that's why they leave, 'cause it's always figured it's us against them. We ain't trying to be united, you know, we need to be united. You know, I, I, whatever, we need to tell y'all too. The first time I could hear y'all last night on TV, whoever fixed that darn sound did good. I used to have to turn it up to eighty, and then if I wanna go back to whatever I was looking at, go back down to twenty. So whoever did that, that's a good thing. But, uh, yeah, y'all just gotta get along, you know? Like the little man come up here, I used to be like that in the nineties, come up here, and I'm like, nobody even listen, they don't care what we say. I mean, give the citizens some kind of input, or, or we gonna do this no matter what, you know? Like you said, if she need more help, hire some more help. They don't have to be permanent. They could be part-time, just for the event. You know, 'cause Juneteenth is a national event. That's different. Cinco de Mayo, same thing. We got a bunch of Spanish people in, in the, uh, city. Let's try to build up the city. You talk about communication, nobody know what's going on. Put it with the, uh, the weather, China six, twelve, and four. They always tell you the weather in the morning, instead of having this on y'all's side, because I lost interest in what the city do. I'm like, F them, whatever they do, they just do, you know? And that's how a lot of people think of y'all. You know, you wanna do, you're doing a good job, you know, yourself, for your wards and the people that you know. But other people don't know that, and they just like, man, forget them people up there, you know? If you want people to move to Beaumont, you have to act like we all are part of Beaumont, just like we all supposed to be United States, like the people with this, this tornado. Everybody out there trying to help each other. It's like we here with, with our hurricane. Don't matter if you're black, white, Mexican, Chinese, everybody trying to help, 'cause you know why? 'Cause we all in the bucket and we all hurting. But we got people with money, and other people with money, they just say, we'll throw some money at you, but we ain't gonna talk to you. It's all right, throw some money on you, we'll walk away from you. But the man was, he trying to say something, I like what you said. You know, for instance, he didn't say it's gotta be a hundred thousand, or gotta be Juneteenth, or gotta be parks. He said that, city manager explained it like, we got other stuff coming up. Y'all talking about, we got things that we gotta spend throughout the city. Nobody gonna do that. You even said it yourself, Mayor. Some stuff that happened with the disasters, you might pull that back. There ain't no sense in not putting it up and thinking about it. You know, that's just my idea. I'm just a citizen, man, I.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, now it's the time for, uh, council member comments, and this week I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Dursa. Durya.
I just wanna thank Charles Paul, uh, he, he's my, uh, my appointee, one of my appointees on the Parks Commission. He's also my neighbor. He's also a retired firefighter and a good friend of mine. I've heard him and I heard one other person say, I'm just a citizen, or I'm just a lowly citizen. I just want y'all to know, there's no such thing. We are up here because of the citizens. We are up here for the citizens. Like Mr. Paul said, we all in this thing together. We all have to do our part, citizens, the council, oh, yeah, the council, citizens too. But there's no such thing as a lowly citizen, or I'm just a citizen. You are very, very important, and that's why we're up here. Everybody have a Merry Christmas, and I'm through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Bart, was there a report of some sort of noxious smell that may have emanated from the thing that happened in Nederland? Do you, have you heard something like that today?
There was a leak, um, in Nederland on, in Bullard Gardens that had kind of a.
Is it drifted into Beaumont?
Well, the wind was, if the wind's out of the south, it may bring some smell that direction.
My, it's, yeah, well, I've had some calls about it. It was in my neighborhood. It smells like a heavy-duty oil. Sorry about that.
You can discuss this.
I, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
You can ask for a status, because that's prohibited by the open meeting.
Okay, well, I did it. Uh, thank you to, uh, the, uh, citizens, uh, that came from the, uh, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I appreciate all of y'all being here. Uh, it was a, a long meeting, and many of y'all stayed to the end, and thank you for that. Um, I also wanna give, uh, congratulations to my wife. She is the president-elect for, uh, some other place, and I know she's gonna do a great job. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
I, I'm asking for an email for update, uh, what's going on with the Amelia pipe that burst, if I can get an email just to know where we are with it in that Amelia neighborhood. A citizen asked me to ask about it, so I just wanted to ask. And secondly.
Sorry, Councilwoman, are you, are you talking about the emergency repair that we were doing?
Yes, I just wanna update an email. I understand I can't get into discussing it. And secondly, I know some people may look at some things I may request, I ask for as new and it's not the norm, but I'm simply doing what the people are coming to me asking me to do. So I'm thankful that the people put me here, and I'm simply doing my job. If the citizens ask me to bring something to the council, try to request for something to get done, I'm simply gonna advocate for the people who put me in the seat. So I'm gonna continue doing that, and I'm thankful for a council that has a listening ear, listening, listening and willing to even explore options of things that's not the norm, but sometimes it's okay to do things that are not in the norm. I don't want anybody listening or anybody younger to feel like it's not acceptable that you might be doing things a little bit out of the norm. It's okay to do things out of the norm, and I'm simply doing what the people who elected me to do. I'm advocating, pushing for some of the things they asked for. So thank y'all for staying. Thank y'all for coming, and I appreciate y'all.
Councilmember Felshaw.
I know you guys are tired, so I'm not gonna say much, but sis, thank you for the cookies and your kind and gracious words. Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Neil.
I have no comment either, but I was hoping that maybe the city manager would, uh, comment on the comments that David Pete made.
Mr. City Manager. He can make a statement of fact.
So, the CFO told me that we budgeted and have for many, many years thirty-six thousand dollars total for Juneteenth and the back-to-school event at Sterling Pruitt Center at Magnolia Park. So I don't know where I, where that twenty-five thousand came from. Um, I don't believe that's their budget at all, I can promise you that. I think it's seventy-five hundred, and then they go raise the remainder of the funds, so. We don't, we don't spend twenty-five thousand dollars of city funds for Oktoberfest.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I would only ask that you read the executive session notice.
I will. We are at the close of the city council meeting. We will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending consideration matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer or employee in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four of the Government Code to which specifically Sherey Reed, First Assistant City Attorney. And my comments are that, first of all, I wanna give a heartfelt prayer to, uh, the, the citizens in Mayfield, Kentucky. Uh, I think we know firsthand, living in the area that we live in, how devastating that could be. And even to the point of the devastation that we've experienced, it still does not amount to what they're going through right now. So please keep them in your prayers, uh, lift them up. Uh, it's a long road, and, um, as you said, Tony, you could have a, a, a house today and be homeless hours later. Um, thank you for the wonderful cookies. I know how good they are, and if you don't want yours, um, I'll take them. Uh, because I know how good they are. They're excellent cookies. And, uh, also, right now, we are not definitely sure that we will have a meeting next Tuesday, because there are a lot of, uh, members that will be traveling for the holidays. So make sure that you check before you come out. It's not, uh, definite that we will not have a meeting, but, uh, there's a possibility we will not. And in the event that we don't, I wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and safe holiday season. And, um, we will recess to executive se- session. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for coming, and. You missed the contemplated litigation item with ExxonMobil. I'm sorry. You read the personnel matter. We also have, uh, related, contemplating, pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the Government Code, claim of ExxonMobil Corporation storm sore. Thank you. So that will complete our, um, execu- our meeting and our executive session. We will recess. Thank you.